All right. All right, welcome everybody to our Tuesday, May 2nd, City Council Workshop at 6:00 PM. And we are going to start off with our continuing discussion on ordinance 119C and proposed changes. Before we jump into that, I will just give a preface. There will be citizen comment period at the beginning of the seven o'clock meeting. So please hold comments till then. Just with regards to decorum in the council chambers. No, we're. We can see the audience doing this instead of clapping. We don't want any clapping, no shouting, you have no, no verbal comments. If it gets to the point where the meeting is being disrupted, we can either have somebody leave or we can adjourn the meeting to another location or another date. So I really want to avoid that. I'm hopeful that things will work out well today. So without further ado, I will recognize that all council members are present and accounted for. We'll do official roll call at the seven o'clock meeting. So I believe Mayor Pro Tem is going to kind of start off where we left off.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say. Just want to just get right to it from our last discussion, the last topic. Fully appreciate and understand. The the thoughts and the concerns of that discussion.
Remind us what that discussion was for the public.
Sure. I believe the motion exactly was the City Council, the mayor will not ban or restrict access to library books or content that is added to the library collection utilizing these guiding principles. And every regard it's refers to. Many different policies from the ALA. Is that right? Does everybody recall that conversation?
Yes.
So. I guess one thing that's been kind of nice is to have a little bit of time between these discussions so we can really absorb. What's been said by our fellow council members and. Taking into consideration some of the feedback on the emails that we've received. So with that, I'm just, I'd like to make a motion. To follow up on that discussion if I can. And that motion is. The City Council or Mayor will not initiate any book ban. The City Council will confirm or deny any book bans by the Board of Trustees. The City Council's decision regarding a book ban by the Board of Trustees will be final. And that's it.
You read that again.
Sure. The City Council or Mayor will not initiate any book ban. City Council will confirm or deny any book bans by the Board of Trustees. The City Council's decision regarding a book ban by the Board of Trustees will be final.
Seconded. All right, open for discussion.
Question, just a. Bill, I got the first part, the City Council will not initiate, and then I'd say also heard not deny any ban initiated by the Board of Trustees. What was the third part again?
Just the City Council's decision regarding a book ban by the Board of Trustees will be final.
Sorry to be slow. Read that.
Yeah, okay. So this is assuming that there's been a book ban and it comes to the council, the the council, City Council's decision regarding a book ban by the Board of Trustees will be final.
Okay, Councilmember Kurtz.
What is, can you explain the? The confirm and deny?
Remind you guys remember to take most of your mics.
And my, my example at our last meeting was if the Board of Trustees goes off the rail, as has happened around the country. I think it's still important that the council be able to approve or deny a decision regarding a book ban only by the Board of Trustees. So that's the purpose for that.
So I'm still trying to get my head around this too. It's a lot, lot of words. So if the Library Board bans a book. We can.
The City Council will approve or.
Then then it can be the if so, if the if the board bans a book, it can be appealed to the council if they uphold.
Not appeal to the council. The way I have this drafted is the City Council's, or sorry, City Council will confirm or deny any book bans by the Board of Trustees. That's it.
Okay. So if if there was a challenge that kept brought came to the board and the person didn't like, like the answer that know it's staying, there's no appeal to the council.
Come to the council if the Board of Trustees banned the book.
No, I'm talking the opposite.
Then it wouldn't come.
Okay. I think we need some, I think the wording may need some help with that.
Straightforward if the Board of Trustees bans a book, it'll come to the council.
Yeah, I think.
But if they don't, then it just ends there.
It doesn't come to the council. Right.
Okay.
We're talking about book bans here. That's what, that's what the crux of this whole.
Right.
Three months has been about.
I'm gonna turn to our city attorney and ask if you have any suggestions on clearer wording.
I don't think there needs to be any regard to emotion. No, I think that to the extent of where it goes from there into a policy or ordinance, that's a different discussion.
So does, I still see some kind of confused looks around the dais. Is everybody clear on where we are? Not seeing nods or heads shaking. I've got your, are you, you clear on what the what that means? Councilmember Cargill, Councilmember Kurtz.
I'm clear. I understand what Sean's saying about maybe fine tuning it if it's approved or not.
Okay. Councilmember Van Norman, you clear on the intent? Okay. And Councilmember Dunn and Salberg.
I wonder if we could just get this on the screen somehow. I'm still trying to put.
Kelsey, can you? Can you make it a little bigger, maybe?
The Council Mayor will not initiate any book ban. The City Council will confirm or deny any book bans by the Board of Trustees, period. City Council's decision regarding a book ban by the Board of Trustees will be final, period. Yes, that's it.
I think that covers.
I don't know. I thought it was pretty straightforward, but maybe not.
Well, I think I think the the motion last week was just a council will not ban any books. And so since this took it a little bit further, I just want to make sure we're all clear on where it's going.
And the intent behind this, just so everybody understands is there has been where it's gone the opposite way, where the Board of Trustees have banned books left and right without council's approval. So. I brought that up at our last workshop. I I think that's a reasonable ask that we put our our trust in the Board of Trustees. If they're going to go so far as to ban a book, it should come to this body.
Otherwise, the council's out of that chain.
If there's no book ban, then it won't come to this body.
Councilmember Kurtz.
I think one of the other pieces that was in the last suggested language was about restricting access. And I wonder if there's a way to add that part into because. It wasn't just simply about banning a book, but restricting access or putting things in certain places in the library. And I think that would be important to be able to put in there.
Well, I'll respond to that. If again, that's a policy discussion, not an ordinance issue.
Yeah, I think that that's kind of the. Crux of why we're here too, because book banning. But then there's also the restriction of access, which is another piece why people are here tonight too. So I think if. If we can figure out some language around restriction of access, which I understand is a policy, but so is banning a book or restricting access. I think that there needs to be some language in there to have it be clear that we're not going to put books in certain places in the library or restrict access in any way.
If if I may, if we can finish that, let's hold on to that piece. If we can keep the discussion on the original motion and language by Councilmember Foyer, and then we can, that could be next. Top next motion, if you'd like to make that, because I don't want to go mixing things. Councilmember Salberg.
Agreed. And thank you, Mayor. What I want to understand, Phil, you're trying to do is instead of saying the Board of Trustees, the mayor, the City Council will not ban books. You're making it clear the process. That unless it comes to us. From the Board of Trustees, then. Okay. And I don't have any questions, and I think we need to stick with this motion.
Okay.
Okay, we've massaged it and I understand that. So thank you.
So.
I do have something. Tell them it's finished.
Yeah.
So I I understand the intent here, Phil, is that if the Board of Trustees. Makes a decision not to ban a book. That it wouldn't, it wouldn't come up to council. That's correct. If the council or if the Board of Trustees makes a decision to ban a book, it'll come to the council.
Correct. Not an appeal from whoever the applicant was, none of that. It would just be an. An approval, approval or denial between the Board of Trustees and the council.
If the Board of Trustees.
If the Board.
Recommending. Correct. My my concern, however, is in the second sentence where it says the City Council will confirm or denying any book ban. So theoretically. If you had a situation where the Board of Trustees banned a book. You have the word confirm or deny. So so let's take an example of, let's say they take confirm out of there. You would just say the City Council will deny any book ban by the Board of Trustees. If you take deny out of there, you say the City Council will confirm any book ban by the Board of Trustees, depending on the situation. So I don't want there to be conflict because of when I describe the intent is what you want between. The confirming of a book ban by the Board of Trustees. There could be confusion construed with the confirm, the City Council will confirm. Any book ban because it's an or proposition. It's one or the other.
But what if the council decides not to confirm the man?
So what you're saying is the term confirm means the council can say yea or nay.
Well, my concern is if there is a, there could be confusion between the confirm or deny a book ban, depending on what the Board of Trustees does. So it doesn't say that it won't come to the council. You could just have a book ban or a non-book ban that could come to the council. And so I don't think that, in my opinion, captures exactly what you're trying to to get at, which is if there is no book ban, it doesn't come to the council. And so if there's a book ban, the council's going to deny that book ban.
Or prove it, maybe they agree.
Right. And I understand that's what the intent of confirm is. I think there just could be some confusion with that. That's all I'm saying with regard to that aspect of it. So. We could potentially revise it to. Make sure there isn't that concern. With regard to the confirm. Because remember, the or proposition makes it, it's either confirm or deny. It's one or the other, depending upon what the Board, the Board of Trustees does. And so I don't want the idea of the book ban to be construed is the City Council will confirm any book ban by the Board of Trustees.
So can we replace it with words like uphold or or reject?
You just want to strike or deny.
If you just say the City Council will deny any book ban, I think that ultimately gets what you're getting at, right? Because nothing else will come up to you if it's unless it's a book ban.
Oh, I see what you're saying. If we agree, we agree. I get what you're saying.
Right.
The only, the only action that would be taken would be if we denied what they their decision was.
Right, because you're ultimately looking at a book ban, right? So the book ban, book gets banned by the Board of Trustees, City Council's saying, we're going to deny that book ban. You don't need to confirm that there wasn't a book ban. Right.
Sean, what if you just added the word either in front of confirm, the City Council will either confirm or deny any book bans by the Board of Trustees?
I don't think that changes the 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 word. The problem is with the confirm, right? Because there isn't. Ultimately, how it comes to the council is the issue. So. It may or may not come to the council based upon what Phil is talking about. And. This doesn't necessarily address that it won't come to the council. And so the confirm is meant to be that they did not ban a book. But in this language, it's you potentially have will confirm a book ban. So when you read the sentence from the standpoint of interpretation. You you need to look at it as saying, taking confirm or deny out based upon the situation because it's an or proposition. So you would say the City Council will confirm any book ban or the City Council will deny any book ban. And so my concern is if it comes up to the council, it's only going to be a book ban. So now you're wondering, well, are you confirming or deny it? You're giving it the option of the council to confirm or deny it.
Well, and I think that's what you want.
I just remembered why I wanted to include the word confirm. And here's why. There's been previously, and like, again, it's nice to have some time to think about all this, all of our discussions we've had in the past. There's been previous discussion. That has had been revolved around. If there's a book ban and there's a lawsuit. Right? If the council doesn't confirm or agree with the Board of Trustees, right? Then if it gets challenged in a court of law. As a council member, I want to be able to say, yep, I'm, I supported that decision by the Board of Trustees. And. Let's. Litigate. But at least both parties, the Board of Trustees and the council agree, yep, we're going down the same path.
But I, but but from the standpoint, the only time it would come from the Board of Trustees is if there is a book ban. Yeah. Right? But you're not going to have a situation where there wasn't a book ban come to the council.
No.
So this is what I'm saying. This is saying whether you're confirming or denying a book ban. That's what that sentence says.
Right.
Right, because because what if the Board of Trustees bans a book and the council does not agree? And they want to overturn the libraries.
So what you're doing in that situation is denying the book ban.
Okay.
Correct. You're not, you're not confirming a book ban. You're just denying.
But if we, but I think the council should have the ability to agree with the Board of Trustees for lawsuit purposes.
And I don't disagree with.
Put that in record and have a, have a. Have it on record. So that's why it's, that's why I added that part.
But my, my point here is you want to confirm that the Board of Trustees didn't ban a book.
No. No. No.
Okay, so. I I guess I'm confused with you with regard to what you're saying here. I mean, this, this sentence says confirming a book ban. It's a confirm or deny. It's one or the other. So if it comes up to the council. Which is only a book ban.
Should it say?
You're not going to confirm the book ban. You want to deny it. I mean, you can have the option if you want. I'm not opposed to what the council wants to do with the option. But if the, if the issue is it's only going to come to the council for a book ban, which is what. This is talking about, you're going to confirm or deny it. If you want the option to do that, then that's fine. We can leave it that way. I'm just saying, when you proposed, you were saying earlier. That. A non-book ban is not going to come up to the council. Right? Okay, so it's only going to be a book ban. And so the council would have the prerogative to ban a book.
To uphold the decision.
To uphold or reject the Board of Trustees decision. Yes.
Right. All right. Any other question? Councilmember Kurtz.
Could we talk about, I guess, that second sentence, the City Council will confirm or deny? That's what you guys are talking about. Can it be just that we're going to review a book ban and not talk about whether it was or wasn't? They haven't, because the only thing we're, we would be reviewing is if a book ban came forward. Right?
Yeah.
So I'm just wondering if there it. If there's some better language that gets to the intent, and I think that's what we're talking about.
Can I speak to that?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Again. The intent of the of the motion is to agree or disagree with a book ban decision by the Board of Trustees. Simple as that, nothing more. So so. If there is litigation, I think it's important that we have in our ordinance that the council agrees or disagrees with the trustees' decision. On a book ban.
Go ahead. I've heard you.
Okay.
But I think it's confusing. And so I think that while I think the your intent is clear, the words in the ordinance are confusing. And you want to have the intent match up with the words on the page. So I I understand the intent. I hear you. But I think that there needs to be some fine tuning so that it is not confusing later and we have to redo the ordinance. So if we could just take a minute and make sure that the language is tight and everybody understands. Or let Sean do that word smithing and bring it back to us now that he's clear on the intent. I would feel comfortable with that, but I. But before I jump over to you, Councilmember Norman, so. If it read, the City Council will uphold or overturn any book bans by the Board of Trustees, does that? Make it more clear?
I don't know.
I don't, yeah. I'm just trying to make sure everybody.
I don't know how that means.
It's interpreted the same.
Or deny uphold or what was your other?
Return.
Return. I mean.
I think it means the same thing.
I think it means the same thing, but.
Confirmation of the City Council.
Yeah. I don't know.
Sean. Now, now that you understand what his intent is, that that the. City Council would either confirm or deny it, have the option to confirm it if for some reason. You know, the Board of Directors banned a book and the City Council decided to to confirm that. Knowing that that's his intent here, do you feel like the wording needs to be changed?
I I think we could make some revisions to it, yes. What I would say is that. Trying to figure out exactly what that is right at this moment, I think we should. You know, move along and we can make a decision if this is the language you want in here now. I can propose something. And then we, the council can then take it under consideration if they want to make changes. If not, based upon their decision today, they can revise it or not. I mean, whether this is inserted or not, obviously there needs to be a vote. And then I could propose some additional language based upon what I'm hearing and what. I'm trying to do address as well. So the council consider it. If they want to, they insert that language, they can. If not, that's fine too.
So since this, oh, go ahead, Councilmember Norman.
Just looking for clarification. Before we made that last vote. It was brought up by the Board of Trustees that there were reasons to do a book ban. I'd like to know what those reasons would be, because if we followed our policies, the way they're supposed to go, there shouldn't even be a book ban.
Right. I'm going to divert from our normal protocol and ask the Chair of the Board of Trustees to answer that question.
The only way that would happen is if a book in a court of law was deemed a photograph material.
Okay.
And then we would be charged if we had that book on our shelves. And it has to go through a rigorous, let me tell you, it's a rigorous list of things that a book has to go through in a court of law in order to meet that photographic threshold. But if it did, then we would be charged, uphold the law and and remove that book from our library. So that's where we would be. Have need to have that authority to make that decision about a book that had been brought before a court of law and deemed. That would be the only.
That would be the only case, which I assume. So again, confirmation, confirmation to City Council. Yeah, makes perfect sense. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, so since we're in a workshop, we really, we can't really make any decisions, but if I'll, I'll just do it this way. Oh, go ahead, Councilmember Dunn, before I go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to kind of clarify an observation. We'll use the word book ban in the situation to be an item was removed from the library's collection. And the opposite of a book ban, I'll call it, is that there was the need to add something to the library's collection, which theoretically the Board of Trustees had refused. I'll gently ask for a librarian opinion or a board trustee member's opinion if that event has ever occurred.
But I'll ask our library director to answer that, Jan, if you could come up to the microphone. Or can somebody give her your microphone?
Has somebody arrived at our library and introduced an item that they'd like to see in the collection, which you had had to say no, that will not be in our library's collection?
Um, we get like, we get a lot of book requests. Sometimes we do deny those requests. Generally, it's, we can't buy that book anymore. It doesn't exist. There's lots of instances where. Or if it's, you know, like someone requests a book in a children's series and they want book three, and we don't carry any of the other books in the series, sometimes we will deny their request. And then just order it from another library for them so that they get the material that they want. But it's not something that we see would circulate well in our collection and not worth our money.
Great.
So.
So in that situation, can you think of anywhere in policy we've characterized that as a book ban?
No. It's not a book ban. A book ban means that it's like not allowed to be in the library. These are books that are allowed to be in the library, but maybe we can no longer procure it because it's really old. Or it would make more sense to just get them a copy from elsewhere so that we're not cluttering up our shelves with maybe like a book series from the 1930s that we don't think anyone else would read.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
It does.
It's kind of like a space issue.
Yeah, I'm trying to operationalize this notion of what a ban really is, because I can imagine operationally, we make decisions almost every day about what items are added or not added, I'll call it, to the library. The concept of ban as a reference is when there's a challenge to an item which is present in the collection that we take exception to. So I guess I'm trying to think, there just doesn't seem like there's a lot of times when we're trying to add something to the library and, well, somebody says, no, you shouldn't. Sorry.
Thanks.
I I just have one other observation. I think I heard with emphasis that the point of the amendment is to express support for the decision of the Board of Trustees. So I'm a little confused as to why to include any action of the council members then in decisions regarding book bans. If we support the decisions of the library trustees, is there a need to have interventions from the City Council in those decisions?
Would anybody like to comment on that?
Yeah, I'll speak to that. We can agree or disagree on a decision by the Board of Trustees. There's, it's. While we value their opinion and their expertise. There may be an instance where. Regarding and they actually go to the the exercise of removing a book based on a challenge and you. I refer back to their policy. Would be the only time that they would. Ban a book. I I think it's important for litigation reasons and so both parties, the council and the Board of Trustees agreed. So I I just think it's important to get that recorded. As an official act by this council.
So the second sentence that Sean's going to work up some language related to. In saying the City Council will confirm or deny any book bans of the Board of Trustees, it will not have any outcome or change to that decision.
Well, then why would we confirm or deny?
That was my test. Sorry, I'm just trying to, you know, if we are here to reinforce and support the decision of our trustees. Why does that measure come to this council?
No. May I? Just a. A rogue answer, you know, say we don't have the board that we have now, we. And reminding everybody that the, you know, council has final say and approval on on board members, but you know, say, say there is a different mix and the intent is not simply like. Board Chair Hamlet said. Maybe big books do get banned by maybe a future board. But not for the legal reasons that in the example we were given, and we have, then the council would have that opportunity to overturn. That. In my, if I'm understanding, right?
That's it in a nutshell.
So the council would have the opportunity to return an item to the collection to profess.
Well, we're in a workshop, so really shouldn't be taking, we're not taking any votes, but just by a show of nods. Can we? Maybe have. Attorney bouts here, work on some language between now and when we get to that item on the agenda, maybe we, if there is a change to the language, then that will be part of the vote on the second read. Does that sound good to everybody? Okay.
All right. Can I ask one last question?
Absolutely.
Does anybody, I mean, or does anybody feel that we're going down the wrong path with this?
Yes.
Sentence.
Not, not from the audience. He is asking the council, please.
Yes. All right, hearing none, that'll.
Okay.
Tells me what I want to know.
All right, so what what else did we have on here?
Mayor.
Yes.
Mayor, we can, with regard to the library workshop, with regard to the ordinance from the standpoint of we can making changes, you can go ahead and vote on. I mean, ultimately, it's just an amendment. To the ordinance that ultimately is going to be discussed later, so I mean.
Well, I guess I was just trying to buy some time for you to work up.
Yeah, no, I mean, I I don't, well, I mean, we can make amendment, I think. From. Well, I think there's twofold. One is I think there's going to be multiple discussions because there's other items that we need to discuss from the last meeting. And then obviously there's an item, you know, later on in a council meeting. So to the extent that we have multiple ones and the and the and the language is agreeable, fine. But you know, as I had recommended before, that we figure out exactly what all those amendments are for today. And then have a decision in the next meeting, but that's up for the council, whether they want to do that, obviously, so.
All right, so you're okay, even though we're in a workshop to go ahead and take a vote on this item?
Yes, because ultimately, these are all going to come back relative to the ordinance later.
All right, I'm I'm good for that unless there's any other questions or comments on this one item. Go ahead, Councilmember Cargill.
Thank you. I'm, I'll vote in favor of it. I do still have concerns about removing the citizens' right. To come to the council with. With an issue about something that's in the library. But having said that, this is what we've been talking about the entire time. And I think putting something like this in is a good step in in the next direction that we're trying to to take the ordinance, so.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Salberg.
I appreciate. Mayor Pro Tem, Foyer's efforts on this, and it's not just the intent. I think the words are clear. If we don't like the words, then we don't support it. But I think it's also, we've been tone deaf. Up to this point with regard to all of the input that we've had from citizens. And this, I believe, addresses that and. If you hear the entire comment. It's, it says that we're not banning books.
Correct. All right, so if there's no other comments or questions on this item, I will go ahead and call for the vote. The question is. Um, the question is, um, to. All of those who approve adding the language. The City Council or Mayor will not initiate any book ban. The City Council will confirm or deny any book bans by the Board of Trustees. The City Council's decision. Regarding a book ban by the Board of Trustees will be final. So, um. All in favor of adding that language, please say aye and hold your hand aye, so I can make sure I get everybody. Is that up or down, Danny?
It's down.
Okay, all right, I just want to make sure, couldn't tell, all right, so. Let me get everybody here. It's not in order on my sheet. All right, it looks like we have a vote of six to one, of all, any opposed. All right, vote is six to one, motion passes to add that language. Now, I agree, this is, uh, this is addressing part of, um, what we're talking about here. It is not addressing everything that's in front of us, but. With regard to people's concern about books being banned in Liberty Lake, I think this is. This really leaves the decision to the board, um, with the, the council, um. Uh, it's something only coming to the council if the board has chosen to ban something. So thank you, everybody, for your work on this. Councilmember Kurtz.
I'd like to, um, if now is appropriate, talk about the restriction of access to books. Um, because that was, um. Not in what's proposed up there, and I think that is another significant, um, concern of the community. Um, so I don't know if I would need to make a motion to amend the motion that was just done or.
Well, I would, I would see this as an addition to.
Okay.
So I would be.
I would like to make a motion to add the language. Somewhere in the proposed language. That the mayor or city council, um, or Board of Trustees will not restrict access to books.
Can you, oh, can we have a motion? Do we have a second?
We stated again, please.
The mayor or city council or Board of Trustees will not restrict access to books in the library.
Do you have a second?
Second.
You have a second by council member Dunn. Um, so before I take comments, I'm gonna go to our attorney real quick. So, um, I believe we've been given several court cases from over the years about restricting access and. Restricting age, putting age limits on things and putting things behind desks. I believe those have all. Been. Um. All of those turned down the, those requests, so you can't do those things. Am I? Summarizing those cases fairly well and that we can't, you know, say only people from this age to that age can re, can. Check out a certain book or, um, keep them behind the desk or in a separate section.
Janie may be able to answer this question specifically, but I mean, I, there are certain restrictions and non-restrictions, I'll call it, from the standpoint of what you can and can't do. I mean, every particular situation is different, and then so I guess it depends on which situations arising to address that particular one, but. Janie may be able to speak it on a day-to-day basis, specifically what may arise and, and the policy that's in place.
Okay, Jandy, would you, would you mind just? Making, kind of just giving us some clarification on, from your professional experience. What is and is not currently allowed by law with regards to placement of books, restriction by age and those kind of things.
Um, there's been several court cases about restricting access to materials. Um, for example, a very famous one was Harry Potter. And so a, um, city council chose to have the book put behind the shelf. And it did go to a court case and they did lose and they were required to put the book back on the shelf where anyone could access it, so. There are several cases, several several cases about those kind of instances.
Okay.
So that's why our policy currently is, is that we don't restrict access so that we're not liable for a lawsuit. And that everyone has access to all materials.
Okay, so it's, so currently our, the policy does say that there's no, no restrictions.
Yeah, we don't stand in loco parentis is the legal term for it.
Thank you, okay, go, I'll go ahead, go ahead and follow up, Councilmember Kurtz.
So my, my point in asking for this is, um. That the council has control over the policies, um, and I do not want there to be a backdoor to be able to change or restrict access to books. Um, and this was some of the original language that I had put in, um, or asked about when we had the, at the end of the meeting last time, so. I'm just wanting to hear a discussion from everybody about whether they feel it has merit or not.
Okay, Councilmember Dunn.
Um, it resonates with me for the notion that the council now controls the policies of the library. And that the council could further insert, uh, language regarding access, whether or not it's truly, I'd say, acceptable.
Any other comments? Go ahead, Councilmember Van Orman.
Well, as we're looking at, um. First Amendment rights, uh, Library Bill of Rights. Those are already included in the policies. Those pretty much outline what you can and can't do already. So I wouldn't see, especially in the ordinance form. Of putting that in, you've got to be very careful of what. Sorry, you gotta be very careful of what you end up putting in the ordinance. To tie the hands for future councils. Um, but I understand where you're coming from.
Go ahead, Councilmember Kurtz.
So I think my thought is that you also have to be careful what you leave out of an ordinance and what you're silent on. Um, and again, if the council has access and can control the policies of the library. And change those. The public doesn't want the council to restrict access to books. And so this goes along with the book banning piece and restricting access because there was, there were comments made that. We wanted to go back and look at the policies. Because there was a, just, an appetite for. Looking at where those books should be put. So I feel like it's very important to actually call out that we will not restrict access, even though it's in the policies. I understand that. Um, but, and I understand that there are First Amendment, I think this supports. Uh, the laws that are already in place and the case law. Um, but it specifically calls out that this city council and this mayor will not restrict access.
Well, I went up at the same time. Go ahead, Councilmember Cargill.
Well, first of all, I, I think we should, um. Make clear that the courts are not one hundred percent on one side or the other on this issue. The Pico case. From nineteen eighty-two is a perfect example of this where Justice O'Connor wrote that it wasn't the court's job to step in. And make these type of decisions and it, it was essentially a four-four tie. Putting that aside. The restrict. Um, language is. The language that gets me on this because I don't know that that has a definition. I think some people view restrict in one way, I think some people view restrict in another way. What exactly does restrict mean? So until we come up with a definition of restrict. I can't support putting that in.
Councilmember Solberg.
I think we're. Again, wordsmithing this, uh, beyond. What we need to, I understand the intent and I support. That. And I believe it is actually. Companion to what Phil was doing. In that, uh, we're not banning books and we're not restricting access, just to make it simple, and that is what we have heard from the citizens over and over.
Right, any other comments? I'm sure I hit everybody.
I just have one, I'd be happy to have this discussion during policy, that part of the policy discussion, but it, policy doesn't belong in the ordinance. That's where I'm, that's where I'm at.
Uh, Councilmember Kurtz.
We just put policy about confirming or denying book bans in an ordinance. I'd like to talk about restricting access as well.
I. I don't have anything further to say, so.
Okay, if there are no other comments or questions, make sure I go around the room one more time. All in favor of adding the language, the mayor or city council or Board of Trustees will not restrict access books in the library, please say aye. All right. Two, three, I've got three in favor. Are those opposed? One, two, three, four, okay, um, motion fails, but it does, this does not mean, just to be clear for everybody, that this. Does not get a, that this doesn't, not a. It's been a long couple of weeks. This is not going to be addressed in the, in the policies. It's already in the policy that they're not restricted, so if this, if this does come up in the future. To, with the council bringing up that they want to restrict access, that is the next, that would be the opportunity. To discuss that policy, so this does not mean that it will be, access will be restricted, it just moves it to another piece of. Policy versus ordinance. Okay, I just want to make sure that's clear for everybody. Um, all right. Uh, I mean, uh, I think, were there more that we had missed? Come, Mayor Protem?
I don't think so, other than some simple wordsmithing, but. I think that was just my take.
Go ahead, Councilmember Cargill.
I think there was something in section nine, if I'm remembering correctly, uh, adding computer and technology language to that last section. I don't think we voted on that.
So you had, uh, Mayor, if I may.
Yes, go ahead.
You, you had made the, uh, quarterly reports language in section five. We made a motion to pass that, but it didn't include the next section, which was the usage of any computer and technology equipment.
I think the intent was to add everything in this section, but we really only voted on the first piece.
Right.
So do we, do we have a motion to add the usage of any computer and technology equipment to section five?
I'll make the motion.
Yeah, a motion by Councilmember Cargill. I'll second. And second by Councilmember Van Orman. All right, any questions or discussion? I'm much, uh, just to catch up with regards to getting into twenty twenty-three. All right, not hearing any comments or having any questions, those in favor of. Adding the usage of any computer and technology equipment to section five, please say aye and raise your hand.
All right, aye.
Aye.
Okay, and opposed, all right, motion passes seven zero.
Mayor.
Yes.
One more question, so my previous version, maybe I'm looking at the wrong version here. Uh, also had it in section nine, but that motion just covers everything, very correct.
Um, Kelsey, can you go up to nine?
So after where it says. Computer wireless device.
Yes, thank you, Matt Bliss, manuscript, comma, computer or wireless device.
Okay, yeah, so Kelsey, can you, yeah. All right, does that look correct?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, do we have a motion to add the words to section nine, reading computer or wireless device after the word manuscript?
Still moved.
Good motion, and a second by Councilmember Solberg. Any questions? Comments, all right, not hearing any, all in favor of adding the words computer or wireless device after manuscript in section nine, please say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Motion passes seven zero, thanks for catching that. All right, no, Councilmember Dunn, you had had some, some other things in yours, I didn't know if.
Yeah.
We had missed any.
Yeah, yeah, page one hundred and forty-four of our agenda for this evening, section six, item G. Powers and duties.
Section six, hold on, I'm working, Kelsey scrolling back, okay.
Yep. Um, so in the red line provided for tonight's consideration, subject to City Council approval. I wanted to remove and replace with the words, I'll read slow. The City Council may reject any bylaw, rule or regulation adopted by the Board of Trustees only by a majority plus one vote. In which case, the Board of Trustees may issue a revised bylaw, rule or regulation. This is a change from the simple majority to a majority plus one. Sure, sure, um, the City Council may reject any bylaw, comma, rule, comma, or regulation adopted. By the Board of Trustees. Okay. Uh, um, only by majority plus one vote. Comma, in which case the Board of Trustees may issue a revised bylaw, rule, rule or regulation.
Does that look good? Okay.
So the introduction to the suggested amendment is to assert that. The action of the City's Council in intervening with the operations of the library. Needs to be of an overwhelming majority of the represented City Council members. I find a simple majority here to be insufficient for the level of power which is being inserted.
So I'm, I might, um, ask for you to, and I, I can't make a motion, so I'm just gonna put this out there. We might want to clarify if you intend majority, majority of the full council plus one. Because, you know, if there's four people here, five, so usually when, when it comes to these things and it's looking for a super majority, it's a majority of the full council, whether or not. Everybody's here, so if there's only six here, it would still require five.
I refer to the attorney in reference to other finance-related operations of the City Council in which a majority plus one vote is required. I think we got some other case ordinances to compare.
Mayor, you're just proposing, just saying majority of council.
Of the full council.
Uh, plus one vote.
Because I know it's the, one of the RC, the RCWs regarding a couple of other super majorities, that's how they word it. It may not be correct in other documents that we have, we'd have to look at that.
Dan, I'm assuming you're just wanting it to be five, right? Is the, is that the intent, the majority, or is it your intent to be whatever's present at a meeting?
Uh, my experience, Sean, is that, uh, the presence of the meeting is. Depending on, I'd say, the level of interest of the council members. To be honest, they're here or they're not, and the expression of majority plus one, probably everybody here.
Okay.
So your intent is not for a majority of the council, it's just the majority at the meeting that's voting on it.
I believe that is a precedent in ordinance, and I just would ask for a reference to that. I specifically refer to financial operations, which this action is comparable to in nineteen two.
Well, they're, they're, depending on the circumstance, that, there are certain requirements when you have majority plus one, that is a majority of the entire council. So, and you have other situations where it's not, right, it's not, so in this case, it would be five, which is why I posed the question. Um, if you're looking at it for just to be a majority plus one of the council. There could be some confusion as to what that means relative to where do you mean five or just four, for example, if there were only six. So, um. That's up to you as far as what your intent is. Right now, it's proposed just being a majority. If you, if the council wants to change that to a majority of the council. Then certainly you could do that, but I think. There are. Specifics in certain situations where a majority plus one means a majority of, the statutes will say a majority of the entire council. Um, and that would be in this case, five, it depends on how big the council is. If you have a council of five, then that would be four. Type situation, so it just depends upon, you know, you're proposing, as I'm hearing you, not to have it be a majority of the full council.
I reflect on several, um, votes that were taken in this body as a council in which there were not seven members. It would be disabling to the organization to require that if it were not present.
And I'm not saying. One way or the other, obviously you can have it however you're proposing it, I'm not saying, it doesn't have to be, in this situation. This language is not required by statute to say majority plus one. There are certain instances where a majority plus one is required for the council to take action. This isn't one of them. I'm simply asking whether. You want it this way or the other way, that's it.
Granted, uh, I'm seeking reference to other pol, uh, ordinances and operations. Without any, uh, withstanding, Mayor, I'll accept the majority of seven as the reference you've suggested. Kelsey, if you could adjust the language to reflect, please.
Majority of the full council. All right, so we, um, that was, did we have a second? I've lost track already. No, okay, do we have a second? Second, we have a second by Councilmember Kurtz. All right, comments, questions, Councilmember Cargill.
Um, didn't we, I, I mean, I, I thought we had already put in section two and had this discussion, the language about. Approving or rejecting, so it seems as if. This would be in conflict with what we have in section. Um, section two, that, uh, Councilmember Foyer made the motion on and passed at the last meeting. Yeah, right there, E, uh, F. And I think we voted on Councilmember Kurtz's motion in the last meeting to change that to. Super majority and that vote failed.
Yeah, the, the individually language there was approved. To be included.
So to clarify, perhaps this is the location where majority must, plus one could be inserted.
I would think.
To, in order to not be in conflict.
Thought Sean, it's a bit better. So basically, the, the ask would be to amend this to add. To, to change from simple majority to.
I, I think probably. One, that, where Dan's proposing may have just additional language, because what this language is talking about is just. Reviewing and approving or rejecting. Whatever policies are in place. With a simple majority vote. Whereas Dan is talking about. Having a.
Future changes.
Yeah, so I mean, I, this is a prime example of what I'm talking about from the standpoint of trying to reconcile the various versions and being able to go back and making sure that there isn't conflict in in this situation as we're going through. So, um, I I think Chris is right, there is a potential conflict between the two on some level relative to approving or rejecting policies, and then what the next step would be relative to what the council can do to overturn something based upon a particular vote.
Okay. All right, so you made motion or not, just.
Yeah, okay. Okay. And also for section G, I just, one more clarification, is there no better section of the ordinance than in the powers and duties of the Board of Trustees? And if this is a better, if there's a better section to include the language on all of this.
Just note the time, everybody. It's eight minutes till seven.
Mayor.
Yes.
So if the intent here is for the future, um, policies, then, yeah, I think I think it goes there. Um, my only hiccup would be on the majority of the full council, but, or excuse me, majority plus one. Um, but I think that that's the, that's probably the location it should be, because I, as I reread section two F, that's basically talking about previous policies.
As they stand today.
Right.
Or twenty, February twenty-seven, yes.
Um, I think the the last sentence of, uh, two F, sorry, says along with any new slash revised policy from this date forward with a simple majority vote. So I think that would be in conflict with what's already been approved.
All right.
Can I jump in?
Go ahead, Mayor Protim.
Yeah, um, I'm gonna vote against the motion simply because in section two B, I'm fully in favor of, uh, a vote of one more than the majority regarding budget, just got budget, budget that affects the operation of the library. I fully understand that paragraph, and that should have a higher bar, but everything, and I've said this before, every other discussion that this body has, it's a majority, simple majority. I don't know how much effort we really, uh, I would question how often are the bylaws, rules, and regulations even visited, let alone updated? I don't know.
Quite often.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, then it should be no different than, it should be a simple majority like we do business on ninety-nine point nine percent of everything else.
Any other comments? Go ahead, Councilmember Dunn.
Um, I just want to reflect on earlier references to the support of the decisions of the Board of Trustees, and that in doing such, if there were to be a conflict to that, it would take more than a simple majority to override them. The words or word choices are to reflect the imperative if the council saw it that way.
All right, so motion's still on the floor. Are there any other comments or questions? I don't see any, so all in favor, Kelsey, if you could quickly scroll back up to that so I can read it. That's okay. All right, all in favor of adding the following words to section five? I don't know the number where we're on. Thank you, six G, uh, number one. The City Council may reject any bylaw, rule, or regulation adopted by the Board of Trustees only by majority of the full council plus one vote, in which case the Board of Trustees may issue a revised bylaw, rule, or regulation. All in favor of adding that verbiage under G one, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we've got Tom, Annie, all right, any opposed? Yeah, Councilmember Cargill, Van Orman, Mayor Protim, and Councilmember Spencer, okay, motion fails. All right, so it is six fifty-five. We do have a potential, you know, we've got in the workshop, the the potential to continue with this, or I and I would go with our city attorney's suggestion that once we finish uploading through all this, we let him have to the next meeting to make sure there are no conflicts and whatnot, but we'll get to that when we get to the second read. So, um, no further ado, we're gonna take a five-minute break until our regular meeting starts at seven, so we will see you back very quickly. If anybody, any of our guests need the restroom, they're right around the corner, women's first, and then the men's farther out. Yep. They're not saying anything, they're silent. Did they start waving and they're silent? Yes. Okay, I didn't say it, we'll see it. Well, I saw them out there.
Uh, probably. You can try to go on the other side, or you can go back here. Um, I guess. Probably at home. Sure.
So that's where they interplay, that's where they interplay with them.
Everybody, please take your seats. I like doing that. All right, everybody, welcome back to our Tuesday, May second, City Council meeting. Everybody, can you please stop talking in the audience? Uh, we are going to, um, start tonight with the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you please join me. Dear Father, thank you for bringing us all together tonight. Thank you for our informed and concerned citizens on either side of any topic. Thank you so much for giving them the courage to be here and 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 speak, um, what what is on their mind, so we can, we can make the best decisions possible for our community. Today was the the, uh, memorial for our fallen, fallen officers. I'd like to recognize that, and thank you to all of our first responders all over the country and serving overseas for helping keep us protected and preserving our rights here. So please, uh, stay with us tonight as we continue some respectful conversations on our, our agenda items, and 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 we ask the same of our audience as well to respectfully listen and, um, and all along with with the discussions going on. Everybody here is here for the right reasons. I do believe that everybody here wants to do a good job. We may disagree, but I think in the end, um, there are things that we all agree on, and let let us focus on that, you know?
And to.
All right, thanks, everybody. If it starts to get too warm, let me know. I can make a couple more adjustments, but I think I've got it down pretty low. Uh, or we can, I was gonna say open the windows, but it's now eighty degrees, so I guess not. All right, so we'll go ahead and call call the meeting to order and do our roll call. Councilmember Cargill?
Present.
Councilmember Kurtz?
Present.
Councilmember Van Orman? Mayor Protim?
Here.
Foyer, sorry, my list is in the wrong order. Councilmember Spencer?
Present.
Councilmember Dunn?
Happy to be here.
And Councilmember Salberg?
Here.
All right, thanks, everybody, for being here tonight. Um, so as we make our way into our seven o'clock session, um, we will next move on to agenda approval. Mayor Protim?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Seconded.
Second by Councilmember Van Orman, all in favor?
Discussion, please.
Oh, yep, sorry.
Um, Madam Mayor, in our six o'clock workshop, I believe we've resolved that the second read ordinance of one nineteen C could be moved to a future date. I would ask that.
Commander, if a second?
Yep.
Um, can we hold off doing that? Um, there, I have some questions on some additional items within there that I want to ask the council, was so.
My objective was to reorder fifteen C to nine A for the benefit of concluding that earlier in the meeting.
Yeah, fair enough. I thought you were gonna try to table that, so I didn't want you to do that. Thanks, Dan.
So so the motion is to move item, where are we, fifteen C to nine B?
A, I would say in front of the existing nine A, um, if that were possible.
I'm gonna look at Mark on this one. Move moving the ordinance to the to nine A or nine B? Nine A is our mission avenue.
So I I don't have an issue. I can, I can get through my presentation fairly quickly.
Okay, and I hate to hold that up, so if if Councilmember Dunn, if you wouldn't, if you would entertain nine B.
Yeah, let's make it nine.
Appreciate it. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Kurtz, all in favor?
Question?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, just to clarify, i- in way to understand that discussion is gonna revolve around questions from our attorney, or are we going, do we need further conversation about the ordinance?
I'll 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 interject on that. Um, I think there's some additional items within the proposals that were made that haven't been addressed. So I just want to ask if the council wants to address those or not. Those are my questions. So it may or may not entail a vote depending upon the versions that were there. And my reason for that is there were multiple versions that we went through at the last meeting. We've gone through now, and I still see some that are still outstanding, and so I want to make sure we capture all of them before we get to the actual ordinance. Um, so that's where I'm.
The the reason for my question is, um, if it's going to be a lengthy discussion, I think it's important that we stay focused on the business of the city per the agenda. Um, if it's a question and answer with our attorney, then that probably is a different timeframe. Is is that a fair assumption on my behalf? Or not?
Opinion, of course. Um, but I would, uh, I would observe that there are observers in our audience tonight also who would rather be, I'd say, attentive to the, uh, to the nature of our work tonight.
Understood. So if I'm, if I may, I'm trying to go through this quickly. I only think there may be three or four at most, might be only two or three. So, and they're, uh, they don't.
Like, warning.
Let's see. And I think they're more of a housekeeping nature, I'll call them. One of them was monthly meetings. Well, this is example, one of them was monthly meetings. That hasn't been addressed or included, if you want to do that. So that's an example. So I I don't think they would take very long from my perspective.
Any other comments, Councilmember Cargill?
Can I just clarify? Sean, we can do that, whether it's nine B or fifteen C, right? Correct.
I think, I think Dan's point was just to have it resolved sooner rather than later.
Okay, so the the intention is not to add a nine B and then come back to the fifteen C later?
No, no.
No.
In place of.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Salberg?
I'd just comment for the sake of our guests that are here, I think that moving it sooner, instead of having them potentially have to stay until eleven o'clock again, is reasonable.
Thank you. All right, all now, if there's any other questions, any, all in favor of moving fifteen C to nine B, please say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Okay, let me try this, and again, nobody's in order, so we had. And those opposed? I'm missing, okay, Councilmember Van Orman, looking for a vote.
You're looking for my vote.
Yep, in favor or opposed to moving fifteen C to nine B?
Well, looking at most of these, we're gonna be done in no time, because they're all first reads. So I'd say we've been at fifteen C.
Um, there's, did you read, if I just, I would just like to point out that there are some other very lengthy things that we we will probably be hitting tonight, including the LP, the PD contract.
Good point, okay.
Well, yeah.
In favor or opposed?
In in favor?
Favor of.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, I missed that, too.
Yeah, me too. I just wanted to make sure we got all the city stuff done.
Not changing our vote. We've got four in favor, three re-opposed, even though it sounds like there's some clarification, but the official vote is four, three, and we will be moving fifteen C to nine B. Okay, now, all in favor of, we had a we have need a motion to, um, approve the amended agenda.
So I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
All right, we have a second from Councilmember Spencer. Any questions or comments? Not seeing any. All in favor of approving the amended agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Right.
Motion passes seven zero. All right, we've got ourselves an agenda. All right, so citizen comments, I've got quite a few here, obviously. Um, I do have some left from last time when we had to end early, so I have one, I'm gonna let go first, because it's a totally different topic, and then we'll allow the people who asked to speak at the end of the prior meeting, go first, and then we'll get into the rest. So just, um, for those people on on Zoom and for those in the audience, just a reminder of the of the rules of engagement with citizen comments. There's a three-minute time limit. There is a, there will be a timer on each of the screens in here. I will stop whoever it is at three minutes, um, just to let you know. Um, this is citizen comment only, so the council and I are here to listen. Uh, if there is something we need to respond to, we will direct, we will make sure we have your contact information, and we will have a staff member get back to you. Notes for the audience, oh, when you do come up, introduce yourselves or online as well, and we need to know, um, whether you are a citizen, if you live in the city limits of Liberty Lake or not, there's a difference between the Liberty Lake community and the city limits. We need to make sure we have that defined. And for the general audience, um, again, no, no, um, no disrupting the meeting. Jazz hands to say, to clap, fine, where I think we're all good with that, but the outbursts, waving signs, any of that is is considered a disruption of the meeting, and we can either ask somebody to leave or dismiss the the meeting to another location or to another date. So we want to avoid all that. I think we're all here to be respectful and just listen. So, um, without further ado, I'm gonna start off with the, um, in-person comments, and Mark Saba is here to talk about the Winter Glow Golf Tournament.
Okay, a different subject than the library, so I'm gonna be short and sweet. I'm Mark Saba. I am a resident of Liberty Lake. Um, I'm also on the Board of Directors for Winter Glow. In case, uh, some of you people in the audience don't know what Winter Glow is, head out the Orchard Park between November and December. There's a lot of lights out there, and we put that together. Well, Winter Glow is a nonprofit, five oh three C. Um, so we only make our money off of donations. Thank you, City of Liberty Lake and all businesses. But we also make money on two fundraisers that we have every year. The first one's coming up next month. It's the second ever Winter Glow Golf Tournament. It'll be held at Liberty Lake. Uh, you can pick up applications, um, either here at City Hall. You can go on to the Winter Glow website, or you can call me, any, Tom Salberg, another one, you you can get ahold of. Uh, we're looking at a full field this year. It's a fun event. I mean, the grand prize is if you get a hole in one, it's gonna be a golf cart we're giving away. So, um, you know, uh, it, like I said, it goes to, uh, the funds all go to a great event that we love putting on every year for the community, uh, Winter Glow, and, uh, it's 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 gonna be a good time. So if you're interested, just get ahold of me, or like I said, get ahold of Tom, or, you know, go on the website. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on our list, and for those who are, for those who are online, if you could just send a message to Todd Henderson, our meeting host, when we get to that point in the meeting, he will let me know who would like to make a comment. Next up is Brad Hamlet. Okay. Shawna Dean?
I'm Shawna Dean. I am a citizen of Liberty Lake. I'm here as a citizen, not as a library board of trustees. But this whole library ordinance review policy has been ridiculous. It's taken up seven months of everybody's time, and I just want to remind everybody here that six of these people are up for reelection in November. That's it.
Thank you. All right, Teresa Tapio Hunt. Where are you? Everybody's sitting as far as they can away from the microphone.
Hello, I'm Teresa Tapaw Hunt. As many of you know, I'm a library board of trustee, but today my comments come as a Liberty Lake citizen. I've lived in Liberty Lake for eight years. My entire extended family lives in this community. They even relocated from Port-a-Lane. I have always been proud to serve and live in this community. With that said, what we have seen in the last seven months from this majority for only furthers mistrust from your community. Those of you who have been on this crusade to change the ordinance over the library have had seven months from the date that it was first suggested by Councilmember Cargill on October eighteenth. You all have had seven months to prepare. You have had months to gather your thoughts, ideas, and questions in a concise, clear, and coherent way. You've even had access to a free city lawyer. You have met with the volunteer library board multiple times, and still, you're unprepared. Your first read of your proposed change on February twenty-first added five little words, but they weren't even in the correct section of the ordinance to accomplish your goal. In fact, two of you admitted during that publicly recorded meeting that you haven't even read the ordinance in its entirety. You all are elected officials. Your salary is paid by the citizens, like me, and like my in-laws who are on social security, and you continue to waste our tax dollars to continue this performance, this political and ideological agenda that you call public service. Good governance should be fiscally responsible and manage public resources and its affairs free of personal ideology and religious belief with due regard to the rule of law. This majority often mentioned that you represent the twelve thousand community citizens, not the two hundred who have written in and sat in on all the meetings. You may not want to believe this, but among those twelve thousand citizens, there are lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer citizens. You don't have to agree with them or understand them, but you do have to respect their First Amendment rights and their right to access a full range of public library content free from ideological control. As Shawna mentioned, six of our city council are up for reelection. Three of the six have created a majority who have been pushing this agenda item along for seven months. In May, one of the six actively vote, voted to ban a book from the adult section of our public library. So my only request as a citizen is that you get it together, because we, as your tax-paying citizens and voters, are watching. That's all.
Thank, thank you. All right, what, had they had you down here twice, so I'll Kim Gerard? Nope, skip? All right. I can't, I'm having trouble reading this one. Kristin Anderson? I get that? Welcome.
Hi, hello. I'm Kristin Anderson. I do live in Liberty Lake, and I've lived here since two thousand and nineteen. And I have to say, this is my very first time coming here, my very first meeting, sitting down, listening to all of this. And this was brought to my attention by my neighbor who works for the library. And I thought a lot about this today, as I was working, I work from home. And it's really unbelievable that we all have to get together, and this has been going on for over seven months now that I'm just hearing twice of a book. And if some of you don't agree with that type of lifestyle, I mean, that's your own choice, but I don't believe that any of you should tell me what I should be able to read and what I should be able to to view of my own. I think it's wrong. I think this is a waste of taxpayers' money. I think that the fact that you have not resolved this, and this has been going on for seven months, shows the lack of getting this resolved quickly. And having anything to do with transgender, gay, lesbian, so forth, I have a nephew that's gay. And when I hear things about this, it just infuriates me, because I don't think any of you have the right to have control of the library, to say what's there and what, who can read and so forth. And exactly, this woman who just spoke, said it perfectly. There are in the population of Liberty Lake, there's, I'm sure, all centered around a different type of choices of life or whatever, and that, you know what, that is their choice, and you know what? I don't disagree with it. Maybe I, I don't, I don't live that way, but I don't disagree with it. I believe that everyone should have the choice to live their life the way that they want, and that's their choice. And I don't think banning a book and thinking that if you ban a book, that's gonna take care of everything. It's gonna put it in a closet, close the door, and then it's gonna be okay. It doesn't work that way. I think that everyone should have the right to read what they want to read and that move on. Take care of other issues in this city that are high importance than a book. I just don't get it. I don't understand. Why are we here? Why are we here? Because we are having to talk about a possible book ban? To me, it's no different than what the Nazis did in World War Two, where they burned books, because they thought that they could just have control and make a utopia of the perfect country of Germany. Well, far as I'm concerned, this has no difference of what you people are trying to, to do.
I'm gonna need to stop you there. Thank you so much for coming. All right, Lynn Atkins?
Okay, so Lynn Atkins, I am a resident, and I am speaking to you in the right, in regards to the rewriting of ordinance one nineteen. So first of all, let me say that I do think the progress was made here tonight, and I want to say thank you for agreeing not to ban books. However, I am opposed to your changing the powers and the duties of the, of the board of trustees, as you voted at the last council meeting. So in the words of Franklin D. Roosevelt, "In other lands, the press and books and literature of all kinds are censored. We must redouble our efforts here to keep them free." Well, that's why I'm here. I'm redoubling my efforts. One needs to only look at the news to see that the libraries are under attack. They are becoming victims of a culture war that's taking place in our country. The ALA's Office of Intellectual Freedom has stated that they are seeing more indirect efforts to control what's available to the community, or to put into law that direct how a library staff collects its books. In nineteen fifty, the Washington State Attorney General said, "The library board is an integral part of the library by law, and no city government, be it council, commission, or manager, has the authority to abolish or reduce its function, except by law." Now, if you vote to approve or reject the policies made by the board, are you not reducing their authority? Governing, I learned at Citizens Academy, thank you very much, Citizens Academy, that our library board is a governing board and not an advisory board. Now, the following is from the Washington Secretary of State's website. "Governing library boards have the authority to adopt policies, but an advisory library board may need to submit theirs. Therefore, it appears that you do not have the ability to reduce their authority, nor do you, nor to require your approval for policies they implement. Voting to allow the council to approve or reject library policy regarding the collection, its placement, and the patron's ability to check out opens a path to potential misuse. Maybe not by this council, but what about future councils? Unless you move now to protect the First Amendment in how you rewrite this ordinance, then I am fearful that the changes will lead to litigation. I know some of you don't believe that it'll happen, but the first time that a book ends up being policies changed to, to the collection, or how and where the books are shelved, or who will be allowed to check them out, litigation will happen. And frankly, if any of those things occur, it seems that litigation may be appropriate."
Need to stop you. Thank you so much.
Time.
All right, Jim Frank? He's still here?
Yeah.
No?
Last time, maybe.
No? He was?
Yeah.
All right, well, I'll put him, I'll move him down if he happens to come back in. Huh? No, Jim? Okay, thanks. All right, Bertie Bachmann? I think you, you had us on mute.
All right.
Welcome.
I signed up for number nine.
Yep.
So, do I talk now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Three, and you, just a reminder, Jim, you've got three minutes.
Yeah. Um. My name is Jim Frank, and I wanted to talk about item number nine, which is a workshop on Mission Avenue. We've been working with the city ever since last fall. The, that road was constructed, Mission Avenue. The contractor did, I'll call a poor job in terms of the asphalt paving and left the road short a half inch or so on portions of the road. And so we've been working with the city to come up with a reconstruction plan. And we've been working on that for several months, actually. And the, we've agreed, I think, on this road section that I'll call Phase One, which is west of Kramer. And that would be a grind and overlay on that road. We've agreed on, we've talked to the city on the east portion of the road to do a grind and overlay on what is called the Crown Section of the road. That road is a bit complicated, because it goes from a super elevation where the road slopes all in one direction to a crown when it comes into Kramer. And so what happens in that is the road is sloping all in one direction, and as you come into Kramer, the south side of the road drops down so that it is a Crown Section. And when you go through that section, when you do that, the road gets flat in a portion. You go from a slope to the north to flat, to a slope to the south. We believe that section of the road meets all the Washdott standards and the city standards. The city staff apparently disagrees with that. And we've told the city that if, if their parametrics, which is their civil engineer, licensed civil engineer, were to make a decision that that road doesn't meet the standards, then we'll fix it. At this point, the city doesn't have a licensed person on staff, so we're just asking that decision be made by a licensed engineer. And if that licensed engineer says that the road doesn't meet standards and gives us an explanation of how it doesn't meet standards, and, and it's his professional opinion that the road should be removed and completely repaved, then that's what we'll do. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll, we've got a workshop coming up on this for the council. All right, Bertie Bachmann?
Hi, my name is Bertie, and I'm a junior in high school. Within the next couple of days, I will have multiple AP tests that, that will help decide my fate for college. I should be home studying for those exams. However, I'm here tonight where you, the board, will continue your efforts to decide whether to take away my First Amendment right to free speech. This action to confirm or deny the banning of a book goes against everything I have ever learned in my entire life and throughout my entire education. I've been taught I have the liberty to express free speech, but by trying to control the library, its content, and who has access to it, you are saying I am not capable of making that decision for myself. Your beliefs are blatantly obvious, but they shouldn't interfere with my freedoms, and neither I nor any of the other young people present today will stand for it. How ironic is it that my liberties are being stripped away in Liberty Lake? When I grow up, I want to be nothing like the most of you, like most of you. When I run for office, whether it be for city council or president, I won't be so selfish as to put my personal beliefs before those of my constituents, especially when the multitudes before me have said loud and clear what it is they want.
Thank you. All right, and just a reminder to our, our commenters, remember to let us know if you live in the city limits or not. Now we have Maria Garcia Bachmann.
Hi, I'm Maria Garcia Bachmann. I'm Bertie Bachmann's mom. We are both Liberty Lake citizens, but not within the Liberty Lake District or lines. Powerless, hypocrisy, uselessness, these are words one can learn in a library and which I have seen personified here. Month after month, you hear from your most engaged constituents, and occasionally from people you clearly care more about, few, a few, few of whom appear to be here tonight or any other night, for that matter. And yet you still vote against what your constituents want. And again, something dawned on me. Four of you don't actually care what your constituents want. In your homes, you make the rules. Maybe in your professional lives, you make the rules. You make, you may be simple, you may even be the majority, but you will not be the simple majority forever. People of my generation are here and we vote, but we can't change things alone. For as much as they've tried, it certainly won't be my parents' generation that will make change alone. But there are young people here in the room and in this community who will vote. They will not stand for this, and they will vote. They will be informed and will vote with the rest of us. They will vote soon, and they will vote you out.
Thank you. All right, next we have Mr. Jody Shapiro.
Thanks for having me. My name is Jody Shapiro. I am not from Liberty Lake. I am from Spokane County. I'm a Jewish leader here in Spokane County. I am a co-chair of a committee called RATE, Responding to Anti-Semitism and Isolation Team. And I am here to urge you, please, don't ban books. Please don't create any policies or ordinances that ban books. I'm very concerned about the resurgence in our community of censorship and book banning. And many in the Jewish community are very concerned about this. So please, just let the librarians do their job. They are professionals. They have a code of ethics. They're well-trained. They know what's appropriate for each age level. They know what's appropriate for our libraries. And parents can always make the final decision, which I respect. And you don't have to read a book that's in the library, but I bet there's a lot of families that want to read the books that some people here want to ban. So, I worry, I worry about that books about difficult subjects like the Holocaust or slavery or colonial genocide may be banned. And kids need to read. They need to read about history. It's how we develop empathy and the ability to learn from the past and create a better future. So please, let the librarians do their jobs. Don't interfere. Thank you for hearing me.
Thanks for coming. All right, before I go to the next person, George Conrad is up next, and what I had told myself all day that I was going to do a quick recap before Citizen Comments, for those people who may not have been here, and I apologize for not doing that, but the council did vote during the workshop to add language. But the council did vote during the workshop to add language about not banning books. So for those of you who weren't here for that, I assume a lot of you were. I thought I would get that out there. So next we have George Conrad.
Good evening. Before you start my timer, are we still on the agenda? I was in the old four room. I thought you guys changed the agenda, so we would pick some of the.
We, we just moved one item.
Okay.
Yep. We're, we're still on Citizen Comment.
So again, George Conrad, I do not live in the city of Liberty Lake, although I worked here for 27 years before, before there was a city of Liberty Lake. So I'm very familiar with this community. I now live in Green Acres, south of Spring. I'm here to talk about roads, especially road construction, road detours. We had hell on earth last summer because of the construction on Barker, the construction on Kramer. I'm sure it's a topic you're all familiar with. I have a proposal. This came up on social media because people are saying there's got to be a better way because we got more construction ahead. And I said, you know, I got a route that I used to bicycle walk all the time right along the edge of the old gun club, and that's what this map's all about. It's a, a large view, a closer view, and the back page is a satellite view. So on the edge of that gun club, which is part of Liberty Lake, there's an area that I think would make a great connector to enhance on south to north traffic in the valley. Right now, if you're on Barker Road, trying to get north, you can go 1.7 miles to get to Kramer in intersection with, with Country Vista. 1.7 miles to find the arterial. If you block Barker, it's even longer. So I don't know if anybody's considered this, although I've been to the City Council for Spokane Valley. I've been to the Central Valley School Board, Board Meetings. I've been talking to, I don't know if Lisa Keys here tonight.
She's, she's online.
Okay, I talked to Lisa, I've talked, this is the engineer at Spokane Valley and also a county engineer. I would say probably in general, the response I get this idea is that would be easy physically to put a connector there. There's no buildings, nothing to move, no power lines. But it's a jurisdictional nightmare, and that's what this map is intended to show. The property belongs to Central Valley School District. It's in the limits of Liberty Lake, but the benefit is mostly to residents of Spokane Valley and those south in the county. But we got to do something. One, all I want to do is get this on your radar. I don't know if anybody else thinks it's a good idea, but there is a solution, I think, an easy, a fairly easy solution. If we can just get past all the jurisdictional things. And it would also be a huge benefit for accessing the new Ridge Shell High School. Right now, you've got a hell of a long way around to get to the, the main road in there. Anyway, that's all I wanted to mention, and I appreciate your time.
Great, thanks. And thank you for putting your contact information on here as well. I appreciate it. Hey, Abby Schuster.
All right, my name is Abby Schuster. I'm a Liberty Lake resident for 17 years. I'm here to discuss the ordinance that's proposed for second reading tonight. So the question I keep asking myself is why are we still discussing this? It's not because we're debating the wishes of the majority of the citizens of Liberty Lake. The overwhelming support of the Library Board of Trustees has been made clear again and again over the last seven months. And I'm not going to reiterate my feelings about the book ban, as I've made those clear on previous evenings. Instead, I'd like to propose that we are still here discussing control of library policy because it gives certain council members an opportunity to continue to voice their personal political agendas. For example, Council Member Cargill, who proposed the change of the ordinance, which would in effect change the library board's policymaking and take it away from the librarians and the Library Board of Trustees. This change is in direct conflict with the expressed desire of the vast majority of the citizens of Liberty Lake. Council Member Cargill has stated, has started his own think tank in Idaho. In a recent press release about this new effort, he has quoted as saying that his business philosophy is doing everything possible to arrive at solutions that are from the people rather than the government. I ask that we apply that philosophy to the decisions made by the Library Board and listen to the people of Liberty Lake. We have spoken and don't want this little city council making book choice or policy decisions for the Library Board. If you can't listen to the citizens of Liberty Lake on this topic, then please officially move to Hayden, where you have, the article states you have started to build a home and spend the vast majority of your time so that someone else who does represent the citizens of this, of this city can represent us on the City Council.
Thank you. All right, Linda Ball.
I'm Linda Ball. I live, I live in Liberty Lake. I've been here since 2018. And to parrot what Lynn said, it's me again, and I've spoken here twice, maybe three times. So I'm not going to take a whole lot of time tonight because I've said all this before, but this is a waste of time. It's a waste of taxpayers' time. It's not a priority. Changing this ordinance is illegal. We have First Amendment's Amendment rights. You read whatever we want. You four who are digging your heels in and dragging this on, you will be remembered on the wrong side of this issue, which could affect your electability. And as you know, there's an election coming up. Let the librarians do what they were trained to do. Let them do their job. In addition, somebody mentioned litigation. I'm well aware, and I'm sure you are too, that you all got a letter from the ACLU, and they will sue you if you decide to ban books. This all began with five words, and I don't know how it's turned into this manifesto that's gone on for seven months. So that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, Shelley Smith.
Good evening. My name is Shelley Smith. I've been a resident of the city of Liberty Lake for 22 years, residing in the River District currently. We raised our son Josh in Liberty Lake from first grade through graduation. He's an avid reader and ultimately earned his college degree in English literature. Today, he's a strong supporter of our local libraries. In fact, he was one of the very first citizens of Liberty Lake to get a library card in our Liberty Lake library when it first opened. He even considered a master's degree in library science until the most recent politicization of libraries. As Josh's parents, it was our responsibility to determine what was appropriate for him to read at an early age. No one else's responsibility. As a parent, I personally wanted his mind exposed to great and sometimes controversial works of literature. Reading and learning to expand one's critical thinking skills can help avoid fear-based decisions like the ones we're commenting on today. Ordinance 119C, really the way it was written, at least as of last night, I understand you're making edits. But it's just a sneaky way to ban books and particularly to exert your power over the public and the library officials. It's your way of applying personal values to the rest of us. Politics don't belong in the library. The library staff and the board are best qualified to make decisions about stocking books, and they have a robust, non-political process. Trust these individuals to do their jobs, please. Allow for the possibility that there might be a more diverse community with interests, interests that span beyond your own. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have Reverend Haywood. Welcome back.
I'm the Reverend Genevieve Haywood, pastor of Airdale United Church of Christ. I am not a resident of Liberty Lake, but I have parishioners who are. And they keep me informed about the activities of your city council and continue to bring to my attention these concerns. At your last meeting, I heard statements of false morality about how this ordinance is to protect children. The example was given that of a single mother and the lack of being able to monitor six-year-old child in the library. Now, the right question would be, why would a parent in Liberty Lake need to drop off children for childcare unmonitored at the library? Having been a single mother and sole provider of my family, starting when my son was four and my daughter was 22 months, I never left my children alone, unsupervised by an adult, until they were at least 13 years old. It would appear to me the issue is not the library. The issue is childcare in Liberty Lake. The library is a place where the library board and librarians are experts in curating knowledge, knowledge for all citizens. These professionals understand the importance and diversity of resources, allowing people to expand their knowledge, to open their minds to a wider world. They are the ones qualified to curate this knowledge. The city council's movement toward micromanaging the library board and librarians appears to be a great diversion from getting your real job done, as evidenced by the five-hour meeting last week, the workshop this week, last week, or the week before, and the seven months of working on this. Imagine if you were working on Jim or George who have come forward. Imagine if you were working on their issues for seven months and five hours and two more workshops. Or on childcare, imagine it. The library ordinance has taken valuable time from the work that this city needs to do. The difficult work, the not-so-popular work of dealing with taxes, city projects, roads, heard a lot about those, development. Let the librarians get back to their work so you can get back to this difficult job. Maybe, I know ego gets in the way. You've worked really hard. You've had this, this has been your baby for seven months. It's going to be hard to let that go for the sake of the citizens. Maybe transform it into affordable childcare efforts in Liberty Lake. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Melissa Pitt. Just real quick, before you start, a reminder for those online, if you'd like to make a comment when these are done, send a note to Todd Henderson, our meeting host.
My name is Melissa Pitt, and I live in Liberty Lake. I've lived here five years. I had prepared comments for the evening, but I'm going to have to add a preface to this, my comments. I'm going to have to do it on the fly because I only have so much time. So first, I want to go in the record of agreeing with the former speaker about the fact that I am solidly against the idea that you passed this ordinance at the last meeting. There's, I think, all of this shows that there was no reason to, because you're having to, like, do gymnastics to try and figure out how to make sure that this is covered and that is covered, because we've all come forward and said, we don't want books banned and such. So why is that even there? But that said, I appreciate the fact during the workshop tonight that I sat through, that you at least tried to address actual book banning. I was disappointed by the fact that you voted down the proposal about where books would be in the library. I thought that was important. And nothing has been addressed about library acquisition. So my other concern about this ordinance is, is this giving the city council an opportunity to interfere in the library's acquisition of materials? And I hope that that comes up later in your discussions because that's kind of a backdoor way of banning books. And I, I really would like to see that addressed. So going back to what I was originally going to speak about, I was going to speak about the letter that everyone, you folks received on April 11th from the ACLU. I didn't know about that until April 19th, actually, after the last meeting. I wonder how many people in Liberty Lake, how many residents, especially people who weren't here tonight or weren't here maybe last week, even know that, that you received a letter from the ACLU pointing out things that you were doing that were illegal, that were actually ran counter to your own previous proclamations. For instance, the city's 2021 Equity Proclamation runs counter to that. It's in direct violation of RCW 27.12.210, which grants authority to library trustees, like Liberty Lake Municipal Libraries Board of Trustees, to quote, "adopt bylaws, rules, and regulations for their own guidance and for the government of the library as they deem expedient." Please let the library trustees do their job. I would love to see you drop this ordinance completely. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have Kim Schmidt.
Hi there. I am Kim Schmidt. I live in Liberty Lake. Much of what I was going to say this evening has been balled up and tossed. However, there's a couple of things that I've also wanted to say that have already been said that I'm going to restate because I feel that they're very important. Four of you are not listening to your constituents. It's very clear. If you want to be Idaho, move to Idaho. Okay, we don't want to be Idaho, and we are up here telling you we do not want to be Idaho. I have spent four years up here in the Spokane area, all of which I've lived in Liberty Lake, fighting back against religious extremism. I have zero problem with religion. I fully believe in freedom of religion. I start to take offense when people use their religion to harass, terrorize, or legislate. We all have the freedom to believe what we believe. It is not okay to push your beliefs upon others. Now, when I think of history of book banning, obviously, it's already been brought up Nazis book banned, communist countries banned books. Guess who else banned books? A group of extreme evangelicals, and it's continuing on and perpetuating and spreading like wildfire right now. And there's a group of us here who are refusing to let that happen. I am tired of paying for your paychecks. I'm done. Okay, those seats that are coming open, we will be filling those. I can assure you of that right now. We are serious. We are not backing down. If we live in a place called Liberty Lake, we should have liberty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and the last one for in-person, unless there's been some new ones, Brian Asmus. Another man who wears many hats.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Good to see you tonight. I am not here to talk about the library. So I am the resident of Liberty Lake, your former police chief, happily retired from that position, currently working for Central Valley School District and one of your Spokane Valley Fire Department commissioners. Tonight, I am here to recognize one of the council members because he is such a humble person. He was not able to attend an award ceremony that we had at Central Valley School District. And so I would like to, and I, I knew he couldn't get away from this meeting, so here we are.
So we've got enough PD here to keep him from running away.
So Councilmember Tom Salberg was nominated for a meritorious service award through Central Valley School District. And I'm just going to read a little bit of the nomination that was presented. Tom Salberg has been the most active volunteer in Liberty Lake from 2012, the true sense of giving and caring to our community. His life is committed to serving others. He mentors and encourages young people in our community. He works with all members of our community to make Liberty Lake together an ever-growing reality. He volunteered on the Civil Service Commission, Planning Commission, Parks and Arts Commission, Friends of the Library, Friends of Pavilion Park, Farmers Market, and the Hub Sports Center. He is part of the Snow Angels and helps plow neighbors, bake spread and goodies for the neighbors, helps neighbors and community members in need. He is active with Vanessa Bean Nursery. He's also a member of Spokane Regional Transportation Council, Spokane Regional Law and Justice Commission. He is a past founding member of Safe Kids Coalition and Spokane County Traffic Commission. And so he was nominated and honored to receive this meritorious service award by Central Valley School District. And because he is such a humble guy, and his heart is in the right place, and does not do this for the recognition, I tracked him down to this meeting tonight.
And I guess our former chief doesn't trust me with the secret because he didn't tell me he was coming for this. All right, thank you. Great way to end. In-person comments, do we have anybody online, Todd? Okay, welcome, DG Garcia. You are up. Let's make sure we can hear you.
Thank you. I had to unmute myself. I apologize.
We can hear you fine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I am DG Garcia, and I serve. I am DG Garcia and I served as an appointed city council member with distinction. However, has not reappointed to complete the term of the position by members of this council. It has and will never ban me from being an advocate for good government and community relations. My comments reference ordinance 119C. One of the fundamental principles found in the US Constitution and the Bill of Rights is liberty. Liberty is continued and remains an unalterable aspect of the human condition. Central to this idea of liberty is the understanding that the political or personal obligations cannot be legitimately forced on people. The right to liberty includes the private realm in which the individual is free to act, to think, to believe, and which the government cannot legitimately invade that political freedom, which is the right to a free flow of information and ideas, open debate, and a right of assembly, economic freedom among them, without unreasonable governmental interference. This ordinance has the intention plain and simple to trample on our rights. Some of the words are being referred to here as they are not only profound, but come from members who care about rights and freedom. However, if it is the purpose of government to protect these rights, then it will not place unfair and unreasonable restraints on their exercise. I will refer to the profound words made by a member of this municipality, as I have commedled them with mine. We don't ever need or want to be in a position where our government feels the need to out-expert the experts. You may each have a set of skills and experiences, but you are not expert in everything the city does, nor should you pretend to be. We want you to lead, but not to strip away at the things you think you have the right to do, as you do not. However, this ordinance shows your continued attempt by several of you. The need for power in any form is not a positive look on any government official. So too are the non-verbal movements of some of the city council. However, this is not a reflection of your power. It is a sign of your weakness. And the exercise of our liberties will be demonstrated at some point in the near future. I too am the mother of Maria Garcia Bachman and the grandmother with pride of Bertie Bachman. We never coordinate our comments. It's just who we are. And I see tonight, not knowing they would be there, that we three represent a part of the trifecta for good government. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for coming. Okay. All right, so we go from here and thanks again, everybody for comments. We are moving on to announcements, proclamations, and special presentations. This one, yes, sorry.
Sorry, I forgot you again, Kelsey. So I've, so Kelsey does gather all of the written comments that we get. And again, I'll just review the fact that we don't know how long each one takes to read. We don't want to cut something off that's very long when the salient points might be at the end. And we also don't want to be left up up to making adjustment on these, what side people are on or what they're trying to get to. So we just, we recognize how many we've received and that all of the council members have received all written comments.
So this go around, we received written public comments from KJ January, Stacy Tannenchev, Jody Shapiro, Dr. E. O'Halloran, Barbara A. Co., PhD, Janine Coghlin, Suzanne Miller, Dixie A. Banta, an anonymous public comment, Fran Davis-Snavely, Miriam Berkman, PhD, Ally Stanton, Donna Simon, Judy Williams, Sean Lorraine Brown, Jan Singletary, Nan Smith, Janet Farnes, Melissa Pitt, John Van Halen, Teresa Van Halen, Deborah Stewart, Stephen Hughes, Shanna Dunn, Reverend Jen Haywood, Josh Hanson, Willow Knight, Tina Noe, Cadence Morgan, Jeremy Renskers, Belle Schuman, Hayden Schneider, Cassie Scholes, Nathaniel Simpson, Rachel Smiley, Shayla Smith, Grace Uteck, Sarah Surprise, Jackson Flurchinger, Alexis Griswold, and Gage Welker.
Thanks, Kelsey. Now, moving on to our special presentation. I will preface this before Mark gets started. How proud I was to be able to work with the staff and with the RPD and their representatives in the past, over 14 years now that I've been involved with the city. This has been the best, the best contract negotiation I've been involved with. You know, in the past, the Teamsters were involved, which, and then, you know, involved our attorneys and, you know, this proposal and then that proposal and all the back and forth. When the PD left, left the Teamsters and formed their own guild, that allowed us to sit down at the table face to face to work through these things. And I am just so thankful for that. And it was truly a collaborative process, give and take on both sides. And I'm, I think that we've got a great agreement. And it gets us, you know, back to where we should be after having a six-year contract that really had us fall behind. So Mark's gonna walk us through the presentation. I think the Guild's going to present as well. And later on, we've got an action item.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Tonight's presentation is intended to be an executive summary with the purpose of, with, and the recognition that this is our first opportunity to tell the public where we came from, how we got to where we are, and then to proceed forward to the action item later on in the agenda. So Todd, if you can go to the next slide. And by the way, we would prefer to hold questions until the action item, but obviously, we're hoping to answering any questions as they come up. So go back one time for me. So the former agreement between the city of Liberty Lake and the Teamsters Local Union 690 was a six-year agreement. Spanned from January 1st, 2017 to the end of December 2022. And like many other collective bargaining agreements, it included provisions regarding wages, hours, and working conditions. Todd, can you go to the next slide? And as many of you can imagine, over that six-year period, we're almost now in a different world than we were on January 1st of 2017. And I'm going to point out one of those differences. And then I'm going to ask Mark Holthouse from the Guild to come up and the Liberty Lake Police Department to come up and talk about the right side of this list. If you look at that left-side bar chart, the annual inflation rate between 2017 and 2022, and as everyone here has experienced, those last two years of 4.7 and 8% year-over-year inflation, that has a real impact. In the former agreement, the one that we just talked about, the six-year agreement, there is no cost of living allowance provision in that agreement. So for the course of those entire six years, our police officers have been getting step increases as they progress through the pay scale, but not cost of living allowances in addition to that. So with that, I'll invite Mark up to the podium and he will provide some additional context on these other items on the list. Mark?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council for having us. So like Mark was saying, you know, in these last six years, we fell so far behind in this contract and usually contracts are about three years. And so this one was way too long. And of course, you know, the economy, inflation was out the roof. And then there's also, you know, significant police legislation in Olympia that severely tied our hands. You know, at some point, we're a little bit more scared of them than we are the bad guys, right? So it makes it hard to recruit and retain qualified officers. In the last several years, we've lost more than half our department to other agencies. And so we're struggling sometimes, you know, we feel like we're scraping and thankfully, we've been able to hire other officers, you know, great, great folks who maybe those large, busy agencies aren't for them. It's now they're able to come here and and work with, you know, calls for service and take their time working with community members. So we're grateful to have those folks, especially some of the guys from the State Patrol. So thank you for not going by those state guidelines, but we're thankful for that. So, but yeah, like Mark was saying, you know, we've fallen way far behind, but it sounds, we hope that with your guys' support, we can, you know, move forward with the times and recruit and retain the qualified officers that we need. You know, some of the laws up there on these, on these, the surges there, you know, we're dealing with a lot of de-escalation training, mental health, homelessness, addiction, violent crime. You know, an 18-year-old can get more trouble for drinking a beer than they can for having felony drugs in their pocket. And there's really no such thing as felony drugs anymore nowadays. So we're frustrated, you know, by the state laws that we have to deal with. So then the nice thing is, is to have your guys' support. So we can at least say, you know what, we do have a community support, the city council support, we can go out there and do our jobs effectively. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Next slide, Todd. So as we look at the negotiation timeline, this is just to give you a picture of where we started and how we got to where we are. We had a contract reopener that came to us from the Teamsters in October, found out in early November that the Guild had been formed and they formed to, or they intended to formally dissolve their association with the Teamsters Union. And so because of that, we had to wait until that process was finally complete before we opened a negotiation. Ordinarily, we would have started sometime in late November, early December, but we had to wait. And that occurred finally. We got word from the state on January 26th that that process had been completed. So we were free to open negotiation, which we did roughly four days later, end of January. And between the end of January and tonight, we met with the Guild members and I'll introduce them here in a minute. We, we had a scheduled number of meetings based upon our guidelines. We met, we agreed to meet on a couple of other occasions just to clarify some details. And then we had several conversations with the city council. And so here we are on May 2nd. Later on in the agenda, we have an action item for your consideration for the new collective bargaining agreement. Todd, if you'd like to go to the next slide. What that bargaining unit looks like in the police department. Several of the members on both sides of this are here this evening. And I'd like to thank each of them for coming out and showing their support for this process. So on the left side, you've got the chief, the lieutenant, a records clerk, and an evidence custodian. These are all outside of the bargaining unit. So that orange square forms a perimeter around the bargaining unit, which currently has 20 individuals in it. Those numbers that you see and those positions that you see are from the 2023 adopted budget. The names or the position names have changed a bit. Number stays at 20. And so that's the bargaining unit. That's who we're talking about as the collective bargaining agreement and who it represents. Next slide, please, Todd. We have this solar system of market conditions that we considered throughout this negotiation. You see us in the middle there. Up at the top, we've got the Airway Heights PD. They struck an agreement on a one-year collective bargaining agreement earlier this year. And so they'll be renegotiating at some point, probably starting very soon on their next agreement. You go down from top to right, Chaney PD did the same thing. In fact, within the start and end of this negotiation, both Airway and Chaney City Councils adopted those agreements. And so it changed our market condition in the course or during the course of the negotiation. And then you go back around to Spokane County and they have a three-year agreement that started in 2022, ends in 24. So they'll be negotiating a new agreement in the midst of what we're proposing as this agreement. Next slide, please, Todd. We had a basic philosophy. We wanted to maintain reciprocity. That means that we treated the negotiating team from the Guild the same way we wish to be treated. We followed established ground rules. I mentioned those. We conducted, we wanted to make sure that we conducted a thorough but timely process. We didn't want to drag this out longer than it needed to be. We wanted to promote fair and equitable structure. And that, what that means is that we wanted, to the extent possible, make the general employee population and the police department population equal with respect to benefits and the structure of the agreement. And then we wanted to achieve a win-win-win for the police department, for the city as an organization, and for the community. Todd, next slide, please. And so now I'd like to, before we get into the proposed agreement, introduce the members of each negotiating team. On the city side, I was on the team, Kyle Dixon, who I think is online, was our chief negotiator. And then our HR manager, Heidi Workman, was on that team. And the mayor, we even convinced the mayor to join a couple of those meetings. I think she wanted to do that just for fun, but, but she was, she was there on a couple of meetings. And then on the Guild side, I've got Mark Holthouse, who you just heard. Mark, would you like to introduce your, your co-team members?
Yeah.
All right.
So again, my name is Mark Holthouse. I'm the president of our Guild. I didn't seek this out. It just fell in my lap and we ran with it and did the best that we could. Jordan Bowman is our detective and our vice president of our Guild. And then Sergeant Mike Boganriff, he is our secretary and treasurer.
Thanks, Mark. And if you are from the Liberty Lake Police Department and are in the audience tonight, raise your hands. Everybody can see you. And so we've got several members from our department. And as we are approaching National Police Week, I just want to take the opportunity now to say thanks for your service. We couldn't do anything that we do without you. Go for it. All right. So what is this proposed agreement? You've seen the agreement. We've talked about it. It's on the agenda. It's between the city of Liberty Lake and the Guild. There is no other negotiating party. There is no big union sitting somewhere directing this negotiation. These three gentlemen here were on the negotiating team for the Guild. Kyle, Heidi, myself, and the mayor were on the negotiating team for the city. We sat around a table on five different occasions and we drafted this agreement. It is proposed to be from January 1st of 23, which is in the past. We recognize that. So it will in some ways be retroactive. But it is a three-year agreement lasting until December 31st of 2025. Todd, next slide, please. When this agreement was proposed, after it was finally negotiated to the Guild, 18 of 18 members voted to ratify this agreement 100%. The difference between the bargaining unit and the 18 of 18 is we had two vacant positions. So we did not have two Guild, or two bargaining unit positions filled. And so Todd, next slide. And so it's here that I'm going to end the executive summary. Again, we'd be happy to answer any questions, although we would prefer to wait until we get to the action item because I can imagine any number of questions being raised and we're prepared to answer those. But if there are any now, we'd love to answer. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All right. Thanks for being here, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Okay, we are up to reports and inquiries. City Council, are there any city council reports? Councilmember Dunn?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'd recognize on Sunday evening, the Spokane Transit Authority held a recognition banquet for safe drivers. Great for everybody to know that there's, I think, at least seven tenured drivers on STA with greater than 25 years of accident-free driving. Statistically, I find that amazing. So yeah, great opportunity for the staff to recognize and to express hospitality.
Right. Thank you. Councilmember Salberg and then Councilmember Cargill.
Kudos to Adorkable and those who attended the first May Day celebration at the the area where we have the Farmers Market. That was amazing. There were an awful lot of really cool booths. There was probably only a week and a half. And Wendy, I think it was on your page first, maybe a week and a half or two weeks notice. And I hope that in the future that we do that. The May poll was amazing. Secondly, there is a homeless symposium. I sent emails out to all the city council members, but for anybody in the audience, it's the third homeless symposium and it's being held next Tuesday downtown. If you have any questions about it, you want to attend, I'm taxing people around for it. It's at eight o'clock in the morning. So let me know. And again, this was recognized, today was the law enforcement memorial down at City Hall. And I appreciate all of the work of the first responders and my brothers and sisters.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Cargill.
Thanks, Mayor. I was just going to mention, there's been a couple of circumstances. The mayor is aware of this where a lot of our Little League baseball teams have been unable to practice or play because we're running out of field space. And so we've talked a little bit kind of behind the scenes. And I think we brought it up when citizen comment was made a couple of months ago about trying to figure out a way we can get more baseball fields in the area as we continue to grow. So I hope we'll continue that discussion. Thank you.
Great. All right. Any other questions? Councilmember Dunn?
Thanks for the tip, Chris, that actually on 13th Saturday is an event at our baseball diamonds, a Little League event. I'm going to say it starts around 11. Invite everybody to come out and see the baseball, see the baseball with the kids in the community.
Right.
Saturday the 13th.
I live close. It's great hearing when we, now that we can open the windows and it's warm, I hear all the cheers from up the street. It's, it's great. All right, Mayor's report. Yeah, I'm trying to make these as short as possible that pack a lot in in a short period of time. Greater Spokane Valley Chamber of Commerce meeting is the third or fourth Wednesday morning of every, of every month. And the overwhelming theme of last week's meeting was labor, labor, labor. We've all heard, you know, you've got labor issues where all the tech companies are laying people off. But then on the flip side, a lot of our Valley Chamber members and the city as well having trouble hiring people with those hands-on skills. It's a big problem. People are, you know, they're back to doing signing bonuses. And I wish I could remember the name of the company, but they have partnered with Spokane Community College where they provide the tools for certain certifications. And when that student graduates, they are given the tools. Because a lot of times, that's a huge barrier to entry for a lot of the students graduating with, with their certifications. So they're trying to get as creative as they can. So they're trying to get as creative as they can with continued education and trying to, you know, get people who, you know, the kids who may not, you know, either be ready for, for college or, you know, they're, they're more inclined. You know, like one of my son's friends, he got his welding certificate before he even graduated high school and he's doing really well. So it's, it's, it's a big issue all around, all around the area for that, those kinds of positions being filled. And I know we had posted for a new additional building inspector. And we went three weeks before we heard, heard got any applications. Also got a call scheduled with, with the operations manager at Valley Chamber on Friday to discuss the the emails to go out to the Liberty Lake businesses who belong to the chamber to get feedback on the proposal of the possible point one percent sales tax versus utility tax issue. Where it's an initial discussion and then we'll, I'd like to, I'll bounce some of the ideas off of you guys and what we want to ask. I want to make it as simple as possible. Visit Spokane. Mark and I had a good meeting with the, the CFO about a week or so ago. There's a lot of things that we can be using Spokane, visit Spokane for that we're not. And we're looking forward to increasing that, that partnership and what they can do for us. And their new CEO, Rose Noble, is coming to here on, I think it's this Friday or next Friday. I'm giving her a tour of Liberty Lake. I can't go to her welcome reception. But she'll be over here. She'll get to meet the staff and I'll give her a tour of Liberty Lake to get some more encouragement on what they can do to help us promote Liberty Lake as a, either, you know, you know, staycation for people around here or people who are coming from other areas of the country to come visit us here. Skipping a couple of things here. We do have a couple upcoming events. I know one that's not on Mark's calendar. This Thursday is National Day of Prayer. Legacy Church here in Liberty Lake has put together a gathering at Pavilion Park at noon on Thursday. Open to everybody, open to any nomination at noon on Thursday for a gathering to celebrate that. Western State's CAT is having their VIP event. They will be, their CEO will be in town and that's, I think, Thursday night. And I'll be attending that as well and saying a few words. The AWC Small Cities Conference is being held in Millwood. I know, I think Mark and I are going to that. I don't know who else, if anybody has signed up. It's Tom's going. Oh, more people than I thought. Great. We'll just have to make sure we don't sit all at the same table. But yeah, those are all really always really good events to get to know your, your, your neighboring elected officials and their staff. Arbor Day, we're a little late, but we wanted more time to plan is our planting of the tree in Orchard Park is scheduled for Monday, May fifteenth. I've been asked to be a panelist on the Vitalant Healthcare Symposium on May seventeenth. It was an interesting invitation. I'm not a medical person, but they are, have asked several elected officials to participate. So the topics I chose were the shortage, the labor shortage of doctors and nurses in, in our area, as well as the effect of poverty on healthcare. Mark's going to talk about drug possession movement. There's new, new news as of today. And then we will be starting civil service interviews the week of May fifteenth. If I missed something, I apologize. Mark, you're up.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm going to go through the events and reminders list fairly quickly. Some of these are farther out. The mayor mentioned the Small City Connector. I only mention it because there's still space available and that is an excellent opportunity to have some conversations with folks from around the area, particularly with this drug possession law issue that's now in the forefront. Farmer's Market is getting ready to fire back up. We've got about three weeks until that happens. Multiple events associated with Memorial Day that are happening, happening in Pavilion Park. AWC Annual Conference is here this year. That's farther out. You still have time to register. And then keep an eye on that springtime events calendar that we've got published with any questions on any of those names before we move on. So hitting on the drug possession law, very quickly, you heard Sergeant Holdhouse mention the the reality that there is no felony drug possession in the state of Washington. That occurred back in February of twenty twenty-one, when the Supreme Court in hearing the state versus Blake decision made, that basically rolled back and nullified that law. And so what the legislature did in response, same year twenty twenty-one, is they put a law in place that made that penalty a misdemeanor, but required diversion. It had a sunset provision. That sunset provision is July first of this year. That's when that law expires. The legislature that most recently through April twenty-third, that was meeting, the session is now over, the regular session is over. They did not pass a law that would do anything in response to that sunset. So if nothing happens between now and July first, that law goes away and it's rolled back to the sense, in the sense that there is no misdemeanor penalty at that point. And so what, what happens? We've talked a bit about what to do as a city. Do we consider our own laws? How do we approach that? I believe the city attorney is attending a, a meeting tomorrow at Spokane County where a, a regional approach may be discussed. The governor has been rumored to be getting ready to call a special session.
It's now official.
It's official. Okay. He announced it today. And so he has called a special session, I think with the express purpose of covering this issue or dealing with this issue. So we'll see what we get through that process. That's a thirty-day process. But I, I think the meeting is still ongoing if I'm understanding correctly. So that, those two things are happening in parallel. That was a like tornado approach through that topic. Are there any questions?
Councilmember Cargill.
I just want to make sure that we have something in place that we can consider in June or sooner, if the legislature doesn't come to any conclusion.
That's the intent.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think the, the regional approach is what everybody has been talking about, considering that we don't have a municipal court.
Right.
And there are all those variables that have to be covered. But that, that's the intent. Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, moving along, I'm going to turn the floor over to Kyle Dixon to talk a little bit about the annual state audit. Kyle?
Thanks, Mark. Mayor Council. So as you may or may not be aware, so cities have until the end of May to submit their annual financial reports to the state auditor's office. And historically, Liberty Lake, we've always done that a little bit early and the auditors know that. So we, they reached out to us and we were able to submit that about a week and a half ago, and they had an opening in their schedule. So they got us on earlier. So usually they do this more or less during budget season, which is a nightmare to deal with. Budgeting and responding to state audit inquiries kind of at the same time. So we were excited to be able to move up on their schedule and get our financial accountability and federal single audit done early. So this is the first time Liberty Lake's going to have a federal single audit because of the expenditure of the library building. Last year, we used ARPA funds for that. So they're going to go through and review all of those in addition to what their normal cadences for review of financials and accountability. Do want to thank Councilmember Solberg for taking the risk assessment. So we had staff do that early next week and he volunteered to do that on council's behalf for the state auditors. And that was done last Thursday. And so we have given the auditors kind of our initial avalanche of information that they're going to kind of churn through over the next couple of weeks. Some point in the next two weeks, we will have what is called an audit entrance conference. And so staff, council and the public is more than welcome to attend that. They will go over some of the highlights that they're going to audit to. And once they're done wrapping that up, we'll have what's called an audit exit. They will go over anything that they found during the course of the audit. Kind of wrap that up into a bow for us to present to council and in our residents as well. So that's pretty much that in a nutshell. And so stay tuned for, for updates as they happen regarding that.
Thanks, Kyle. Any questions on the audit? All right, moving on. Lisa, I know is in the chamber, so I'm going to invite her up to the podium to talk about winter glow storage. This is a topic that you've heard before. We're going to provide an update.
Good evening, mayors, council members. On, on February seventh, Mark Saba presented a workshop to you on a strategy for building a storage building at Orchard Park for winter glow storage purposes and also for parks equipment. He had proposed that Greenstone could do that. Could basically front that project and then seek Tiffin Lift reimburse reimbursement after dedicating it to us. After researching this, the examples that we had come up with on private development projects that were done on city property, the examples being like Harvest Parkway Roundabout or, or the Indiana Signal were all tied to development proposals. And as such, there were conditions of a development approval. And in researching it, we determined that it was necessary for us to go through a design bid build process with this. We are looking at, given that and given the projects that we have on board and the fact that we haven't budgeted for, for this project for this year, we are looking at bringing it back to you in the, the twenty twenty-four capital facilities plan for construction next year. And we would follow a design bid build process. Again, important that we follow all public works procurement laws in doing this. And so that is our proposal to you. And I stand for any questions.
Doesn't look like there are any. Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. We have had a widget embedded on our website for a while. Jen Camp is going to describe an outreach effort that we're taking using that to get more people to let us know when certain park trash receptacles need to be addressed. Jen, you want to take it away?
Yeah, sure. So gone are the days where people just phone into City Hall for questions, requests, concerns, et cetera. There are a whole slew of ways they can communicate with us these days. One of them is text my gov, which I think you all know well. David Gainer brought to my attention a couple of months ago that we could, he saw this happen in another city where we could put a sticker on our waste bins that are scattered throughout our parks and trails that says text waste bin to our text my gov phone number. And basically we've set that up so that it, the, the person can identify with a photo, they can identify the coordinates with the, or crossroads so that we can have an idea of where this waste bin is located and the fact that it needs service because it's full. When I was traveling overseas recently, I saw this in restrooms in, in airports. And I, I just, I thought, what a great idea, because so many people don't want to pick up the phone and call. They just want to shoot a text. And we actually implemented this probably about two weeks ago and got all the stickers put on the waste bins in our parks and along our trails. And we received our first waste bin notification over this last weekend. It was full. Our staff had emptied the bin Friday, but it filled up by Sunday. So it was a really simplified way for us to respond to a concern. And so with that being successful, we're now thinking bigger. We're thinking, you know, we're seeing a lot of vandalism at Pavilion right now, Pavilion Park. And so how can we narrow that timeframe down when that vandalism happens? Well, maybe if we can post around the park, if you see vandalism, please report to text vandalism to two five five seven four four five. Right? So if we can help narrow down that window when that vandalism happens, it, it helps PD find the potential for what timeframe it happened in, instead of our staff coming in Monday morning saying we have vandalism sometime over the last two days of the weekend. Hopefully it can help aid in, you know, finding out when that happened and get some more details. So, so I could see this growing more in regards to maintenance, you know, do our restrooms need servicing? Do, do you see vandalism reported? So it's just another great opportunity to allow citizens a way to connect with us and report things instead of it's, you know, seeing some of the traditional ways that they can report it. So I love it. David Gainer, thank you. It's been a great success so far and we hope to continue building this communication.
Right. Thanks to you guys for the idea.
Thanks, Jen.
Hey, I, I just got to say, this is innovation. This is engagement. I mean, this is like amazing, Jen. I want to say thank you for your work. Great new communication method for the people. Thanks.
And have, have received those phone calls early on a Saturday morning saying that there was no more toilet paper and the ladies, you know, at the farmer's market.
Exactly.
Appreciate these things.
Exactly. And, and those text stamps are tested by our monitor through the weekend on occasion. So I mean, there's a chance I can catch it on the weekend or people can text me. And so it's, it's perfect. It's so much easier and it's just one more way we can nip it ahead of time.
Right. Thank you.
And I just want to clarify that you don't have to have a waste bin issue to use text my gov. It can be used for any number of things. It just happens that this is on a sticker that helps you identify that specific maintenance type. So use it for other stuff too. Strategic planning survey. We launched this last Thursday. As of this afternoon, we have a hundred and fifty-five completed surveys. We're looking for a lot more. So over on the table, there's, you'll see a, a page over here. It's got a QR code on it. It'll take you right to the survey. We're billing it. Take five minutes and help shape the next five years in Liberty Lake. We want your input. We need it. And so this is going to be open for a couple of months. We want to make sure that we get this in front of folks in a lot of different places. We've got a roadshow scheduled where we're going to go and talk to homeowners associations, civic groups, hopefully Ridge Line High School, farmer's market. And so this will be available for a while, but don't wait too long. We want to hear your input. And so if you go to our website, libertylakewa.gov, there is a button right up at the top that'll take you right to the survey as well. So either method. But we want to hear your input. Thanks. Any questions about the survey? All right, Mayor, that concludes my report.
Great. I'm excited about the number that we've gotten so far for our first shot. I think, what'd you say? We had forty-seven the very first day?
Something like that. Yeah, I think it was. Yeah, I think that, I think you're right.
Great. Okay. All right, moving on, we have Spokane Valley Fire Department. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Mayor, council members. My name is Zach Bond. I'm the deputy chief of operations for the Spokane Valley Fire Department, proudly serving the city of Liberty Lake. And I'm here tonight in place of Chief Soto, who has another engagement. So thanks for having me. So if you've seen our monthly response total reports, they're very data and graph heavy. So I'm going to do my best to keep with the three-minute theme and get through most of it and point out the high points that pertain to Liberty Lake in particular. If there's any questions or concerns as I go through this, please don't hesitate to slow me down. Do I do something to start it?
No, he's working on it. Please hold.
This might be quicker than I thought. There we go. And can I control it from over here? Or do I have to say next slide every time? Oh, I can do it. Okay, great. All right, jumping right in. So in the month of April, the Spokane Valley Fire Department responded to one thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven incidents in our jurisdiction. Year to date, we're over seven thousand two hundred. Response summary, which is the amount of times our vehicles are responding to incidents, which is going to be greater than the number of incidents, because we send multiple units to some calls, is just shy of twenty-two thousand three hundred. Highlighting some Liberty Lake resources from your Fire Station Three, Valley Engine Three, which is represented by VE three in the graph there, ran a hundred and forty-two calls for service in the month of April. Your closest ladder truck, which is Valley Ladder Ten on Sprague, just over the border, responded a hundred and sixty-two calls for service in the month of April. Next slide, please. This is a graphic to show that we have a robust auto and mutual aid agreement with all of our partners that we share borders with. Essentially, the, the theme there is that we, we send the closest vehicle to the emergency regardless of the name on the door. As it pertains to Liberty Lake, you would see Fire District Eight on a rare occasion, but for the most part, you're going to see your Spokane Valley Fire Department responding to the incidents here. And the bottom graphic shows that we, we handle over ninety-three percent of our own incidents within our jurisdiction. Next slide, please. So again, just another way to show how busy all of our districts are, again, highlighting District Three, which is Liberty Lake's firehouse. Approximately nine point three percent of our runs occur within District Three's first run area. Next slide, please. This is calls for service by type. So the two big lines you see, red is the twenty twenty-two totals, blue is the twenty twenty-three year-to-date. And the highest call volume is for advanced life support, followed by basic, basic life support, and then calls for fire suppression in various types. Next slide, please. So this is a lot of information to show a month-by-month representation of, of our call volume. As the weather gets nicer, we tend to see an increase in call volume. Right now, we're Right now, we're about a hundred calls shy of where we were last year at this time, but we expect as the the weather gets nicer, that our call volume will continue to increase as it has for the last few years. Last year being a record number for the department. Next slide, please. And this ju- just shows what I was trying to illustrate. We're the the graph there, just going into the negative shows we're about one percent, give or take, from where we were this time last year. Next slide, please. So we we try and take an opportunity to highlight some high-profile incidents that occurred within the district. As I said, we responded to nearly eighteen thousand calls for service. This was a high-speed vehicle accident. It resulted in tragically one fatality and one critical injury. And we always take this opportunity to, as as people get more on the road and weather gets nicer, please slow down, be respectful of your your fellow drivers. Next slide, please. Again, the result of this horrible accident. Next slide, please. This one occurred right here in Liberty Lake. Horseback rider suffered an injury in a remote part, and your Fire Station Three has the capability of putting in service. An all-terrain vehicle, as you can see there. They were able to locate the patient, load her, and get her to definitive care in a relatively quick amount of time because of that specialized equipment. Next slide, please. So this one's a little bit of a lighthearted one. We get, you know, the question is whether we rescue cats. This resident got stuck in a precarious situation. We helped the cat safely to the ground. Next slide, please. As the weather gets nicer, our swift water rescue teams are out getting their powerboat training and swift water rescue training. So it's again, an opportunity for us to remind people that the rivers are flowing heavily and the water is very cold. So practice all of your water safety, please. Next slide, please. Another shot of the capabilities of your Spokane Valley Fire Department. We are an all-risk fire department, so this is our powerboat swift water rescue team. Next slide, please. That's all of them. And I'll just take, I'll finish by highlighting something wonderful that happened here in Liberty Lake. You probably heard that a hiker was missing over the last twenty-four hours and thankfully was found over the this afternoon. What was the lead story on the news tonight? Proud to say that our Spokane Valley Helicopter Rescue Medics assisted our law enforcement partners in hoisting that gentleman. Out and to ground transportation, so.
Was that picked up in Pavilion Park?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I heard somebody mention that. Great.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions? Looks like it. Thanks so much for coming. Okay, let me move. Slide a couple of things around here. I, the really like swimming water district. I don't know if anybody. Anybody from sort of. Okay, all right. And I don't see anybody online. If I missed Surin Water District online, please send a quick note to Todd in the chat. Okay, moving on, workshop discussions. Nine A is Status of Mission Avenue Repair Project. Marks up again, I think.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. And I am here on a different topic this time. We're gonna talk about the East Mission Avenue Project. You heard Mr. Frank address this in the citizen comment portion of the agenda earlier. I wanna just remind council that over the weekend, you received an appendix filled with all kinds of technical information, and so. That is related to this presentation, but not something that we wanted to try to go through here. There's just a lot of detail there. But if you have questions about that, we'd be happy to address those things. If you'll remember back to early October, we had a briefing regarding this project. And I wanna use the next couple of slides to help reorient you to what we're talking about where it is. Am I not advancing? Was that me or you? Okay.
Todd's not giving up control tonight.
Okay. So where we are on the map, you see Selkirk High School there in the bottom left-hand corner. So the project location is there in the red boundaries. It is on either side of the new Kramer Roundabout. This was, these off-site improvements were required by the preliminary plat associated with. River Crossing twenty twenty. And so this is not a city CFP project. The the city is not the PM on this project. These are off-site improvements that were required by that preliminary plat. Todd, go to the next slide for me. We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to get a rhythm because we've got some. Some stuff coming up that that's gonna be tricky. So the project scope, you saw the boundary along that roadway. It includes the street sidewalks, landscaping, bus stop pads, swales, street trees on the north side and irrigation on the north side. So all of those things are part of the required off-site improvements. Todd, if you can go to the next one, thanks. So on, in the planning phase of this project, and the initial plan submittal way back in September of twenty twenty-one. Took five turns through the system. It was approved, final plan approval on December twenty-second of twenty twenty-one. That final plan approval was conditioned on coordinating with Wash Dot to tie into that roundabout on Kramer that you saw in the in the overhead graphic, the bird's eye view there. And in, related to this project, an asphalt road that is constructed according to the city's. Engineering design standards has an expected life of twenty years. So we're talking about a twenty-year asset here. Next slide, Todd. So after that plan approval occurred. There are a number of things that are required. You saw that there was what is called an inspection card in that appendix. Had a list of all of the things that are required associated with this project. In June of twenty twenty-two, the pre-inspection was completed in June of twenty twenty-two. Curb ramp and dry well inspections were completed. And then after that, there were no other required inspections scheduled prior prior to the road paving. So all of those. Inspection types that you see under there were were neither called nor performed prior to the road being paved. And so, Todd, if you can go to the next slide, here's where we're, so I'm just gonna say click it. All right. So on August sixteenth, through just kind of a drive around, we do frequently. City discovered the unscheduled construction activity happening, essentially the the road going down. Click it, Todd. On the twenty-third, we went out and we did some slope and grading tests to. See if what was being constructed was in conformance with our standards. Click it. On September seventh, we did, we asked for compaction reports. And and paving tickets from the the paver, which we received and evaluated. Next one. September twelfth, we ordered a flood test. And what that is, is a big water truck shows up and dumps water on the roadway so that we can see how it is draining, whether it's ponding, sheeting. Huddling in areas. So that was conducted on the twelfth. The next day, on September the thirteenth, we took core samples for pavement depth evaluation. Our engineering design standards require a minimum of a four-inch pavement depth. And so we were taking core samples to confirm whether that minimum was made or not. Next one, please. And through the evaluation of all of that data, in conjunction with our on-call engineering contract, which is parametrics. Local firm, or at least it has a local office. We decided to reject that roadway. And again, thinking back to the scope, the the roadway is one piece of that. So we're only now here talking about the roadway. So the city decided to reject the roadway based on the results of all of those. Of the evaluation of all of those pieces of data in conjunction with our on-call engineering contractor. Next. And so that went out again on September twenty-second. So where where does that leave us? It leaves us with a substandard roadway. That that's what we have. And so what what do I mean when we say substandard? The first thing that I mean is that it. Go back to that, Todd. Just let's hang out there for a while. So it means that it doesn't. Conform with our engineering design standards. And I mentioned a couple of areas. We talked about a four-inch minimum pavement depth. We have a two percent minimum cross slope requirement. Those are some of our engineering design standards. This roadway was not constructed according to the approved plan. The the plan that was approved on December, in December of twenty twenty-one. What is on the plan is not what is on the roadway. And so the details of all of that are in the appendix that we provided earlier. And so at that point, the direct, the city directed the developer to prepare a repair plan. We need to address this deficiency. And we have a substandard roadway, so we need to work on a repair. So that's what we started to do. Go to the next one for me, Todd. Thanks. So the the repair deadline that was established. Was June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. That is the start work deadline. The reason that we set that deadline is because we wanted to make sure that this repair work occurred. After the the CV district's last day. At that time, we did not know when that was exactly. And then the other thing is, we wanted to make sure of is that it happened before the Kramer. Overpass and road opening. The last thing we wanted to do is to have the Kramer overpass and road open, and then immediately or shortly thereafter, have to come back and close mission again. You you heard George earlier talking about traffic congestion and tying connectivity of mobility systems together. This is exactly why we did not want to do that, that I just described. And so working backwards from that, from that June thirtieth date, we set an April fifteenth, twenty twenty-three pl- plan approval deadline. For the reasons of making sure that we got into this season. Understanding that there's a seasonal paving demand all over the region, projects are are going gangbusters. And so we're competing with those projects when it comes to paving material, crews, equipment, all of that. And then there are contingencies that always happen. And so those are the two deadlines that we were working with. Our develop, our our city team was working with the developer on. And so if we can go to the next slide, Todd. So now we're back into this planning phase. We're in the repair planning phase. I mentioned that the letter of rejection went out on September the twenty-second. On October the twenty-fourth, a month later, we got our first set of plans on the repair. Five, when I say turns, I mean, five plans have gone through the system, right? So the submittal. Rejection comments, here's what needs to be shorted up, resubmittal, that process, one. Turn is one submittal and either approval or rejection. And as of. The deadline that I mentioned, April fifteenth, there there was not a final plan approved. So the reason why that is the case is because none of the five plans that were submitted fully addressed the deficiencies. And none of the submitted plans included a a proposed cure for the segment east of Kramer. Next slide, Todd. What does that mean? Well, in the first four plans, this is what was submitted. So you see on the left that hatched. Black line dot area, that's. The segment west of Kramer that extends almost over to North Harvest Parkway. The red cloud is the segment east of Kramer. It's not even on the plan. So we couldn't evaluate the proposed fix because we didn't, we didn't get it on the east side. Uh, next slide, slide, please, Todd. So. Through the course of that timeframe between September of of twenty, or I'm sorry, September twenty-two and. Today, essentially. We had a lot of engagement with the developer trying to get to a resolution. You can see the meetings on the left. There were seven of them. Over a hundred emails. We had five plans, mentioned those in the one letter. And so throughout, the city was actively engaged in trying to resolve these deficiencies because at the, at the end of the day, we're talking about. A substandard road. That's not what our citizens paid for. That's not what we are going to deliver to them, and we're not going to accept. Substandard infrastructure. So we're we're going to find a resolution. So now we're in the post-deadline phase. What I mean by that is April fifteenth was a deadline, we're after April fifteenth. Todd walked through these for me. So we sent a notice letter. To the developer on the seventeenth of April. You all received a copy of that. Next one, please. We had had this discussion prior to the deadline. However, the the design workshop that we ended up having on April the twentieth. Ended up not taking place before the the deadline, so it it occurred after. But our commitment to scheduling that design workshop, because this is not something that we ordinarily do as part of our process. It's something that I think we should consider going forward, but presently, we don't currently do this, is we committed to. Sitting down with the developer around a table and walking out of that meeting with an approvable set of plans. Assuming that they agree to meet the engineering design standards that I mentioned. And so that was our commitment. Let's sit down, let's go through it. We'll we'll, we'll walk out with an approvable set of plans. So we met on April twentieth. Uh, next one, Todd. On April twenty-first, we received a submittal number six. Um, and that was for the segment that was between. The roundabout, so essentially west of Kramer Parkway. Again, not a a plan that addressed the segment east of Kramer. So now we have the the plan six on April twenty-first, next one. On April twenty-fifth, we said that plan, plan number six, that addresses the west segment. The the segment west of Kramer was approvable. That was the commitment that we we made for scheduling the workshop. And so that's where we are with the west segment. We have an approvable plan. Um, and so you heard Mr. Frank in his comments refer to this as phase one. So we have an approvable set of plans for phase one. Go to the next one for me, Todd. So we got plan seven submitted on April twenty-fifth, the day of the extended deadline. And this was titled Phase Two, and this was for the roadway segment east of Kramer. So this is the first plan we received for the segment east of Kramer. Next slide, or I'm sorry, next timeline. And then same day, we received plan number eight, which was titled Phase Two B. This plan was also for the segment east of Kramer. This was a more comprehensive plan. But this was ultimately not accepted by the city because it's incomplete. We cannot accept it according to our codes. Um, and so we're we're not able to consider that plan at this point. Next one, Todd. And so that's where we are. We're at a determination point. We have plan phase two A that the city rejected. It it's not viable. And we have submitted. Plan Phase Two B, which we're unable to accept. It's incomplete. And so where does that leave us? Next slide. That leaves us with a substandard roadway. And so that's where we were back on September twenty-second. And so you you've seen the timeline, you've seen all of the engagement. What is the path forward? I think because we didn't receive viable plans for the segment east of Kramer, the plan forward, next slide, Todd. And our recommendation is what is on the agenda later in the in the in the agenda, later on the agenda. I'm saying that multiple times. So the staff is recommending that we. Uh, or that the council approve a work order to parametrics, our on-call contractor. To design and bid, that thirty-seven thousand is for design and bid of the repair of Mission Avenue. For the east segment, the segment east of Kramer that goes almost to Cornerstone Way. And so why is this not addressing both sides? Well, you saw the previous slide. We believe we have an approvable set of plans for the segment west of Kramer. We need now to address the segment east of Kramer. And this task order will do that, and that is our recommendation. And so. Again, we've got an action item later in the agenda. We'll be happy to answer questions now, but we'll also defer. To the action item, if that's what council would prefer to do.
Go ahead, Councilmember Cargill.
Mark, two questions. One. Tell me that we're never gonna go with this company again. And then two. If if the work was not completed as required, why are we having to do the extra thirty-seven thousand?
So that's a great question. It is because we believe that the only way. The segment east of Kramer is going to be done adequately is if we now step in and have it done. And so what we would be doing, and the thirty-seven thousand is for design bid, we would still have a build portion. That we would be coming back to council later to authorize. We would, the the city would then step in, submit a proposal for reimbursement from Tiff Lift. And so the city would be made whole for those expenses.
But the taxpayers wouldn't, because, I mean, those Tiff Lift runs are coming from taxpayers.
They are, but it, the 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 totality of the project would be approximately the same dollar amount. For the total project. We 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 believe, the city believes that if we don't. Authorize the task order that. We will not. Complete the east segment. East of Kramer.
And it will fail premature.
In a in a viable way, right? And so we talked about the twenty-year asset. Uh, we we don't want an asset that we're replacing in ten years.
You're gonna go first, okay. For, uh, we got um city attorney and then councilmember Spencer.
Mark, I just want to clarify, and maybe as far as Chris's question. The city will. Move for Tiffin left reimbursement, but the developer would do the same thing if they had finished and completed and paid the money for.
That's correct.
The build. Yes, I should have. In the end, it would be the same same process.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Spencer was next.
Yeah, and my question was similar to that. Um, so this will prevent the general contractor from submitting the Tiff lift reimbursement. Is is that correct? From what they, the work that's.
I'm gonna ask Lisa to come up and and get a subject matter expert on that.
So there'll need to be an accounting at the end. We are not accepting the roadway, that portion of the roadway on the east side. That was constructed by um Greenstone. Because uh, and because of that, they don't qualify for Tiffin left. You've been through that a number of times. However, there may need to be an accounting for the portions of the roadway that we're using. We would still use. The curbing in the base that was constructed, so we would have to do an accounting of that, and there may be an opportunity for them. To be reimbursed for the portion that we reuse. Um, if they construct. The. So segment that's west of the roundabout, they would be able to submit for that whole segment, but they would not necessarily be able to. Submit for the repair work that they did just for. The the full cost of the roadway minus repair.
All right, and I think I had. Mayor Protem next, and then Councilmember Kurtz. Okay, Councilmember Kurtz. Okay, all right. Anybody else have any questions?
Can I ask one more follow-up?
Yes, absolutely.
Um. Mr. Frank said earlier, um, requesting that the decision be made by a licensed engineer. Can you add more? Labor on that?
So uh. So I can, um, there there is no requirement for uh any plan that is submitted to be reviewed by a licensed engineer. We. The the review that the city uh performs is a code compliance review. And so there there's no requirement in this state or any other for that to be done by a professional engineer. Uh, he stated that preference before and. We're. That would be an additional cost that we do not want to incur.
Okay, thank you.
No, Mark, can you speak real quick um at high level as to why the submitted plan two A? Was was is rejectable, because I know that that's one of the disagreements.
I'm gonna again ask Lisa to come up and hear you, so you can hear from the subject matter expert.
Just high level.
High level is that the the. Plan two A um didn't address the full area of where the pavement did not meet our standard, and it didn't. Reflect the whole slope that would need to be repaired. It was um. The, let let me put it this way. The, if the project is this long, the solution was this long. So that, so they left out a a whole segment of the roadway that still need, that still didn't meet standard in that plan.
So am I understanding correctly that? The plan that was approved for that portion of the roadway? It was constructed differently than the approved plan?
That is correct.
And that's, and because of that is why a grind and overlay will not work. On that section.
That is correct. There is a super elevation involved, so it requires a a different fix.
Right, okay, thank you. All right, any other questions or comments? Mark, no, nothing.
Thanks.
All right, thanks, guys. We'll we'll ta- tackle this during action items. All right, next up, we have, oh, nine B. Library ordinance. All right, so um, we are back to this. Um. Where do we leave off? So Sean, you had some other things that you had on your different, different iterations of the ordinance that still needed to be addressed.
Yeah, they're just a.
If we can do that first, and then we will hold off on any motion on a vote until we get through this piece.
So there were just a couple, couple of them, mayor, uh, council. One of them had to do with section six being appointment. Of the Board of Trustees. Right now, it says the majority of the appointed board. Shall be residents of the city. Um, the proposal was all members of the board. Uh, so I just want clarification as to. You want to leave it language as is or change it to all members?
Go ahead, Councilmember.
I I thought we had voted on that at the last meeting, didn't we? Because someone made that motion. Yeah.
There, there was a motion relative to the language. That I had proposed.
Right.
And Kelsey, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think there was language relative to the members. Do you have that? So Kelsey, I've kind of worked in since the last meeting and trying to make sure that we're on the same page. Um, and I didn't believe that was one of them. If I missed it, then I apologize, but I didn't think that was one that the council had specifically voted on.
Well, Kelsey's looking that up.
Um, similarly, Kelsey, in this one too, um, was the monthly meetings. I didn't think there was any issue with the monthly meetings, but um. I didn't have that that one was voted on either.
Yeah.
If that's the desire. And that was in, would it be a, would be a new six G? Specifically, the language was the Board of Trustees shall meet once monthly to review policies. Procedures, consider recommendations to the City Council, and ensure adequate management of the library.
So. I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in and ask the question on that one. They do meet, they they already, they already meet once a month. It's in their bylaws?
Yeah, that was, that was the reason.
Okay.
Just.
So you just want to mirror that, okay?
Yep. It doesn't change anything.
But we have a motion for that language.
I'll make a motion to add section. Six. Gee, which would be monthly meetings. Uh, the Board of Trust Trustees shall meet monthly. Once monthly to review policies, procedures, consider recommendations to the City Council, and ensure adequate management of the library. And then I think the thing that was added was all meetings will be open to the public, which they are and recorded and posted for public viewing.
Yeah, that's part of. That should already be in there somewhere. It's a. Or another.
Yeah, uh, the Board of Trustees shall meet once monthly. To review policies. Procedures. Consider recommendations to the City Council. And ensure adequate management of the library. All monthly meetings. Will be open to the public. And will be recorded. And posted for public viewing.
Kelsey types fast, but I don't know.
I can. All monthly meetings will be open to the public and will be recorded. And posted for public viewing.
Again, all all things that are already currently happening, unless I see a head shake from J and B. That all good? Yeah. Right, Councilmember Dunn?
Um, point of clarification is the monthly meeting asserted in the uh bylaws um of the trustees.
Yes.
So why are we adding it to the ordinance?
The reason was, uh, to add it to the ordinance was, as the mayor mentioned earlier, to make sure that they are. Basically lining up with each other, that they say the same things. It's just reinstating the requirement.
The bylaws control the trustees.
Right.
And now there's another document that controls the trustees in this regard.
Right, but it says the same thing. So it's not.
Find it redundant that it's put in two places.
Well, okay, well, we can vote against it if you want. I mean.
It's a question.
Point of order, do we have a second? No, we do not yet. Do we have a second? So the council member's. Motion was to add the language as posted in item F in red on the screens. Do we have a second? Not hearing any, that motion will die. Okay.
Sorry, Kelsey.
All right. What did you have next, Sean?
Help, for doing that, let's just go back to the. The section six B. Um. You, it does, as I'm looking at the minutes, it doesn't look like we addressed that either. So just for discussion, I'll make a motion that all member, section six B appointment, um. Changing the majority uh to all members, the appointed board shall be residents of the city of Liberty Lake.
We have a second.
Second.
So get a second by Councilmember Cargill. Any questions or comments? Go ahead, Councilmember Kurtz. I feel like the makeup of the board should reflect the users of the library, and we do have a lot of people in our community who don't live within the strict boundaries. Of our um. City. I I just wonder if this is actually necessary. Um, and I'd like to hear more about why they think it is. Um, I'm gonna, again, I'm gonna break protocol and let our library director, since she's a staff member, to weigh in. And the, and I, and I. Janie, I've, again, I feel I I promised I would do a lead into this.
The thing that I would like clarification on regarding whatever you guys decide is the library views. Residents as anyone who lives in the, lives in Liberty Lake. They don't have to live within the city limits. They can live by the lake. They can live over in the River District. It's anyone who has a Liberty Lake address, nine nine zero one, sorry, nine nine zero one nine. Or nine nine zero one six. So that's what we define as a resident. So I just wanted to add that.
Yeah.
If you want it to be within the city limits of Liberty Lake.
We'll need to specify that.
I would like that specified for my staff and future staff knowing. What it is that you literally mean, since we kind of have a different definition of residents.
Thank you. Councilmember Solberg.
This is kind of a larger discussion because all of our commissions are are representative. Of people that are outside of Liberty Lake. They represent the planning commission plans for things that people that come in, just like people come in to use the library. And and I don't dispute that we can go. Back to the, everybody has to be a Liberty Lake. Boundary resident. But I think we need to have another discussion. And if we could hold this one off, have another discussion about whether or not we want to have a non-voting. Um, member of each commission and the Board of Trustees, so that we have input from those people that use those things, and it's just a bigger discussion.
Okay.
They would be like the. Okay.
So yeah, so Parks and Arts doesn't have anybody outside the city limits. Um. But community engagement doesn't.
That's not my point. My point is the discussion is whether we should, because we have people that are using all of the parks. If I need to go through the whole thing for everybody, it's clear to me that we have people there, but if we. Added a position that was a non-voting person, I agree. That your vote is your money, and the people that are paying for the taxes here should have the vote, but having input from them in each of the commissions, including the Board of Trustees. Might be something to consider at a later time.
Good. So the current motion is to um add. All members of the appointed board shall be residents of the city of Liberty Lake. Get that motion second, Council, uh, Councilmember Spencer.
Uh, yeah, I'm I'm just curious if if we updated the the verbiage to all voting members of the appointed board, and and that would solve that problem, if we wanted to add it later. Add a non-voting position or multiple non-voting positions.
So you want to make a motion to amend?
I'll make a motion to amend.
Okay, do we have a second to motion, second to the motion to amend the proposed language to say all voting members? We have a second to that. Second, thanks. Second, my Councilmember Cargill, any questions or discussion on the amend amended language? Sure.
Well, it says of the city.
Yeah, so this one says, yeah, residents of the city, and if there's needs to be. A change to the library policies, that can, that can be addressed separate. All right, so any other questions on the amended language? Right, not hearing any. All in favor of amending the initial motion. This is not a vote on the original motion, just the language. Making the motion to say all voting members, um, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, hold your hands. Any opposed? Right. All right. Motion passes five-two. Kelsey, did you get that? Okay, all right, so um, so we have amended language, so um, any more discussion on? Adding the language, all voting members of the appointed board shall be residents of the city of Liberty Lake. Any more discussion or questions on that? Right, not seeing or hearing any, all in favor of adding that language um to six B, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and those opposed? All right, we have um. Motion is passes five-two. Kelsey, you got? Okay. All right, so we have that added that language that all voting members of the appointed board shall be residents of the city of Liberty Lake. Next. I'll let you two duke it out on what's next. You have some next.
I I think. Well. Do we need to follow up with the motion from our workshop for the couple of wordsmithing things that we identified earlier?
Well, we, the, there was a vote on those as 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 worded.
We don't need to do it again.
No.
No, and I, I, no, the answer to that question is no. Um, I don't have anything else for me. I don't know if the council has any other changes that they want to discuss. If they do, great, let's have that discussion. If not. My recommendation is to. Table is till the next meeting so that I can go back and put this in the finalized version. So everybody can see what the changes are and exactly what the language is. Kelsey and I will work together to make sure that we're on the same page as what she's reconciled and what I've got here myself. And then you'll have one final version to vote on at the next meeting.
No workshop, just the action item with any discussion. Councilmember Dunn and then Councilmember Kurtz.
Madam Mayor, I move that uh ordinance one nineteen C be moved to the next meeting pending the consideration of the city's attorney.
Yes, motion, we have a second. All right, um, no second motion. Dies on the floor. All right, so I guess that means, go ahead.
Uh, I just had a question whether um the verbiage uh in Mayor Protem's uh proposal at the last meeting under section six H. Two. Whether that was voted on or not?
We'll get there.
Sure.
We don't have a six, we don't have an H?
Page four.
Oh, oh, okay, so what was, it's, this is, okay.
Yeah, so page four from Mayor Protem's uh proposal.
I don't have that many. What was the verbiage?
Uh, it's, it says adopt slash revise Liberty Lake re- library policies subject to section two E, which would now be two F, which is what was approved.
I don't remember that.
Well, it wasn't a motion, it wasn't voted on, so it's a follow-up. It was discussed, but we didn't take a motion.
Okay, is so is there a motion for that? This is the reason why.
Yeah.
Giving the attorney extra time would be a really good idea.
Yeah, yeah, I'll motion to uh add section uh to section six H to adopt slash revise Liberty Lake library policies. Subject to section two F. Second.
And we have a motion second. Let's wait till Kelsey.
Or two E.
Two F, it it's, it's stated two E, but we uh, we added it to the before we added the uh. The original two E that was in. Mayor Protem's.
Right, so let 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 Kelsey finish getting the wording, and then we need to go back and look at that referenced line.
Section six H. Two.
What was the rest of the uh?
It's a new two, right?
Yeah, so it pushes back the uh, the existing. Two through uh five, I guess.
Now that you're in G.
Oh, well, I guess, I guess G, G was proposed as the monthly meetings, so so I guess it would stand as G at this point.
Well, you could, you could still just put it at the bottom of the list.
Uh, it is, yeah, sorry about that.
Then we don't necessarily.
Yeah, there had been a proposed G, so that's, that's been.
We have. Right, so can you go back over the language again? Adopt.
Sure, adopt slash revise Liberty Lake library policies, comma, subject to section two F.
Okay, can you flip back up to two F then, Kelsey, so we know what we're referencing? So is it?
I see.
I see.
Again, trying to do all this on the fly, making sure we don't have conflicts and everything references correctly is key.
Sure.
Maybe later in this discussion, someone who voted against tabling this, we'll bring it back.
Seems to be appropriate, meaning in light of what that is, but. Yeah, I think it looks to be appropriate given what, what two E said.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Do we need to have both of these or are they redundant? That's, that's part of the reason I'm asking.
I, I don't necessarily disagree with that, but I'm just saying if you're going to use that language, at least it subjects it to that other section.
So real quick, I know, um, Councilmember Spencer, you made a motion for that. I didn't record. Who was the second?
I was.
Okay, thanks. All right, um, let's read it again. If you can go down to wherever that got inserted.
Six G.
That's a six G. All right, to add, and, and the title, I'm sorry, Kelsey, I'm gonna ask you to flip back up to the top of six, so we can look and see what the title of this section is. Okay, Board of Trustees, okay, and we go down here. The, okay, so it is, okay, so under the trustees' powers and duties, they are explicitly given adopt or revise the Liberty Lake library policies subject to section two F. Okay. I'm assuming we don't have a conflict with that.
Uh, no, I don't think there's a conflict.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion and a second.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Is it unusual that we have a section one saying adopt bylaws, rules, regulations, and a section two adopting policies? Is there really two sections necessary to cover that?
But, Mayor, I, I think one is for the, as far as the Board of Trustees. Um, and then the other one is with regard to policy. So I think that's the distinction that's trying to be made here, but Jed, you can tell me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be happy to, uh, so yeah, the, the first reference is under section two, authority of city council and mayor. Uh, so we are not creating policy. Um, and, uh, section six is referring to the Board of Trustees' powers and duties.
But in section one, let me make sure, following Councilmember Dunn, so section one, under G, powers and duties, G adopts such bylaws, rules, and regulations for the guidance of the Board of Trustees and for the use of the library, public, by, like, public library. So the first part of that piece, and number one, is adopting the rules by which the library trustees work. But then the second part, to me, reads, for the use of library, Liberty Lake Public Library, is the policies of the library.
It would seem the policies apply to the use of the public library.
From your legal standpoint, Sean, are we?
I'm sorry, I was, I didn't catch what you were saying.
No. So G one, the first part of G one basically is talking about the library board adopts their own bylaws, rules, and regulations for the guidance of the board. The second part of that sentence says that they adopt, um, bylaws, rules, regulations for the, for the use of the public, Liberty Lake Public Library. To me, that's policies for the library.
No. Where are you seeing for the use? Which section? Oh, I, I guess, okay, I'll, I, I know where the clarification is. So Mayor Protem's, uh, verbiage, um, that part was not highlighted. So, um, uh, G one actually states on that one, adopt such bylaws, rules, and regulations for the guidance of the Board of Trustees, period.
Yeah, I, I had that.
So that last part was cut out.
Right, so.
Oh, okay.
So we need to make a motion to remove that, um, G ones.
So did we already?
Well, I, I think the language for the use, and I agree with Jed, I was looking at the same thing with regard to that, is, that's already there. So before subject city council approval, correct, Member, I'm Kelsey, that's the only language was proposed originally. Your ordinance is talking about is all is there. So, in other words, this is already there.
Right.
This was just something.
That, that was the original.
Your supply rate policy. In your proposal, this part is, was eliminated. So that was the confusion that I had in trying to follow.
Sorry. So just end, the, the period on, on the, on one would end at Board of Trustees.
Right.
And we already voted. I say I lost track of what we've approved.
We already voted on getting rid of the subject city council approval. That was struck. So after we vote on G two, then we need to come back to G one and strike everything after trustees.
I'm sorry, I don't remember striking subject to city council approval.
It was just never approved. That was just a proposal from originally. That was what I had suggested way back in the beginning. So it, it was never even something for consideration, something I had just proposed initially.
Initially weren't proposed.
So if the, the desire, Chris is right, if that's what the intent is to have a section two that's proposed there, then you would probably need to remove the language in one, um, for the use.
Right, okay. All right.
That's good attention.
Okay, any other questions before I call for the vote on that, and then we'll go, have to have this follow-up for section one. All right, all in favor of? Yeah, so I was just getting ready to, I read it as part of my vote. All those in favor of adding the following words to section six G, as it would be number two, to ad- adopt slash revise Liberty Lake, Liberty Lake library policies subject to section two F. So any questions before I take the vote? All right, not hearing any. All in favors, say aye and hold your hand up.
Aye.
I haven't made my way over here yet. Okay, all those, all those opposed? All right, motion passes four two. So that language has been added to give a follow-up. Oh, oh, what?
Four three?
Four three, sorry.
That's okay.
Told you it's been a long week, y'all.
So I'll make a motion to strike the language after trustees in section G one.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Cargill on the second fight, Mayor Protem. Um, any discussion or questions on the on the motion to remove the language after Board of Trustees in G one?
I just want to ask, Chris, what's your intent? What's the purpose of doing that?
So the discussion that we were all just having is that the, the langu- the end of that after trustees made it difficult to understand if that section was referring to the trustees or the library. So with the addition of G two, G two talks about the policies now already. So there's no point in having G, that section of G one that we're striking. Does that make sense?
Does it change the governance of the Board of Trustees in any way?
Looks to me like it clarifies it more.
Yeah. I don't think it changes it.
Can I jump into?
Yeah.
That was the original addition from the very first, first read. So it was the only thing that we added. So since we decided to go through and
Yeah.
revise what we're revising, there's no need to keep that any longer.
I believe what's highlighted red now is what's being removed from the current ordinance.
What's lined out in red.
Yeah, it's being removed.
That's the current motion, right. Yep.
And with, and then with the addition of number two, so the one, number one addresses the board, and the second one addresses the use of the library, basically. All right, any other questions? All right, those in favor of removing the words and for the use of the Liberty Lake Public Library from section G one, please say aye. And those opposed? All right, motion passes four to three.
All right, Madam Mayor, yes. I'd like to make a motion that we table the second meeting of the ordinance to a special meeting where we can focus on this ordinance in full, and I'd be happy to go into more detail if we get to discussion.
We have a second.
Second.
Motion second.
We've heard from the community tonight that it's taken us seven months and we're not done. We are here at another meeting where we are going to be here for longer than anybody intended. We have our police officers here waiting. Um, we've started subjects, we've coming back to subjects, we've had workshops, and then the, the thing is later. And I would really like to have however long it takes, for the longest special meeting we can have, to get this nailed down, get it completed, and for the people that are interested solely in the library to be able to come here, hear what we're talking about, and for the rest of city business to continue at regular city meetings. And I'd like to know if anybody is in support of that.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Any discussion or questions? Councilmember Dunn.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to recognize that the city's attorneys have provided direct advice to this council to table this, uh, matter for a following meeting, and under which time he could take and reconsider the words that have been chosen.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Salberg?
Comment, I don't know what we're voting on. Uh, it, there's been so many revisions and so many changes. I'm, I'm opposed to having the governance of the library given to the city council, and I can't tell where we're at with that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Councilmember Spencer.
Uh, I'm, I'm not necessarily opposed to, um, moving it forward to a, another, another regular meeting, so we can see all the changes that have been made. But I think we've hashed, hashed out all the, the questions, uh, regarding what, what we wanted added or removed, um, unless I'm missing something.
Councilmember Cargill?
Well, I don't disagree either. I mean, I'm, I'm happy with, um, with either scenario. I, my problem is that we heard the comments made that this has taken seven months. This is part of the reason why it takes seven months. Is because we've done two workshop meetings now with the library. We've discussed this ordinance, we've gone through it with all the different changes that everyone has proposed. We voted on them, we debated them, we had a special meeting, I mean, all these different things. So to the extent that, um, it takes another meeting to get through everything and to actually have everything on paper, that part I don't have a problem with. What I do have a problem with is delaying action again, um, and stretching this out even longer. I understand what Sean's saying, and I, you know, it's nothing against you, Sean. Uh, I would like to give you the time as what, as well to go through it all, but that is my concern, is that it just adds to this this notion that if this is being drug out, when unfortunately, sometimes government moves, moves like molasses.
Mayor, just for clarification, my intent is to, because there are multiple versions. We had stuff from Chris, from Phil, from Jed. My only intent here is not to go through anything more. It's to say, here are all the proposed revisions. I want to make sure that they've been captured. And if they're not, fine, then we can address them. But the intent would be that between Kelsey and I, we will capture all the proposed changes in this ordinance, and it will just be up for a vote. Obviously, there's a discussion on the ordinance, but it would show exactly what the language is in the ordinance, um, that's being amended from, you know, the previous ordinance.
Right, Councilmember Cargill, then Kurtz.
Well, or we could, um, we don't want to delay it. We could, we could just vote on the, the ordinance. And be done with it. And whichever way it goes is the way that we're going to be dealing with it. And if it, if it goes, then the governance of the Board of Trustees comes to the city council. If not, then it stays the same as it is right now.
Councilmember Kurtz. So I guess what I was thinking is not to delay it indefinitely, but like a week. Um, I would like the opportunity for, um, the citizens to have it noticed, for them to see what it is that we've talked about, because this is mumbo jumbo. They don't even have the stuff that we're looking at.
Right.
I would like a few minutes to read through it and look at it, because it might actually affect my vote. Um, I'd like to be able to hear from the community, the people that have participated in this process, to know if what is here is something that they can agree with. Uh, because again, that would affect my vote. Um, so I know that it's taken a long time. Um, but I think that we can get there with one last meeting, and either it passes or it fails. Um, but I do think to Tom's point, we do need to know what we're voting on, and I don't feel like I do. And for me, it would be a no, flat out, because I don't know what it is. Um, I want to see it. I want to listen to the attorney. I want to listen to our legal advice, and I want to see the language that he said he was going to propose for us on a couple of the things that we talked about earlier. So, um, I would like to be a little bit more cautious when we're putting in law.
Yep, great. Right, Councilmember Protem and then Councilmember Van Orman.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, does anybody feel like there's anything more, anything substantial that requires more discussion? I mean, I think we've hit it, about hit it all, have we not? Okay.
Yes.
Councilmember Van Orman.
So.
Oh, sorry, I thought you were done. I apologize.
So I'm in favor of putting on our next agenda as a, as ordinance second read, but I would ask that all of our changes that we've incorporated and voted on, whatever be in a red line format, so it's easily identified. Um, and then just do it at our next meeting.
Question.
Yeah.
Can we make sure that that's available to the public on the?
It'll be on the agenda.
As the agenda's.
Yeah, it would be, it absolutely will be, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
We missed Councilmember Van Orman.
Thank you.
Well, the question I had was, uh, special meeting. What would that?
Yeah, we don't need a special meeting.
I mean, instead of doing a special meeting, I know that we had a vote, but I don't think the discussion was completed, and I believe that that's why it failed. So special meeting, I don't believe we need it, but we can do for the very next meeting. Would you be able to have it ready for us?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, I, I, I think the special meeting was to say, this is just one item, it's not going to interfere with, I think Annie's point was not interfere with other business. We can have it and be done with it. I'm envisioning, and that's all subject to the council, but I'm envisioning that you'll get a red line version that shows all the changes. You'll go through it. You may say those are exactly what they are, and you just have a vote. I mean, that's the way I'm envisioning it, but right now, I'm not sure what Kelsey's supposed to publish. We know what all these are, but if we don't capture all of it and then vote, and you, and there's a passage, then that's the ordinance. So if it comes back later, then it's going to be, well, no, that's not the language that we specifically wanted, or some, between Kelsey and I, we missed all of it, or some portion of it, and that's why I want to make sure we all have the same ordinance and the same changes that have been made. So I'm not, I'm not envisioning having more conversation, oh, what about this? What about that? It'll be, these are all the changes we believe the council voted on, and now you can vote on it, unless you have differing opinions of what we put in.
All right, so motion on the floor is to, um, schedule a special meeting to try to pull all this together, a single subject. Is that correct? Councilmember Kurtz, that was your, that was your motion. So if there's no other questions or comments on that motion, I'll go ahead and take a.
Oh, yeah. We just heard, we just heard, we don't really need a special meeting.
But there's a motion on the floor. We have to take a vote on.
Second, so.
Can I make an amendment to it then?
Can we get through this one and then?
Okay, fine.
Do. All right, so all in favor of scheduling a special meeting next week to, um, wrap this up, um, with the um, final review and vote, please say aye. Keep your hand up. Okay, we've got. And any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion fails two to five. All right, so then, then I, I mean, just hold, just hold on, just, so I do, I do appreciate, and since you, since you voted in opposition to the original motion to table this, you can bring it back. That's why I want to make sure everybody understands that. Um, but yeah, I agree. I think voting on this tonight is, would be disingenuous to the people who have put so much time and effort into this, including our, our, um, our residents and, and visitors who have commented. He's, he's trying to follow what we've been doing. I'm sure is, I mean, I'm having trouble following everything, trying to see everything on the screen, right? So in order to have the, the ninety-nine point nine percent flushed out document for everybody to have a final look at, and a final vote, I think is, is, um, is really, you know, the best way to honor our, our residents and people who've commented on this, so that we all know what's in front of us. And I will say that in in the fourteen years of doing this, I've never seen an ordinance with this many revisions to it at the second read. So, um, yeah, I, I think it's good to, in my opinion, to just take the extra time and make sure we all have the final document. Mayor Protem.
I'll make a motion to table ordinance second read to the next meeting, which is, I don't have the date.
Sixteen.
May sixteenth, uh, as a, uh, as our agenda item under ordinances.
Second.
Well, that was Councilmember Salberg.
Section fifteen.
All right, we have a motion second to move the, um, vote on the final second read and final vote on one nineteen C to the next regular scheduled meeting on May sixteenth. Any questions or comments? Going once, going twice, going three times. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, and any opposed? Officially, I'm asking, motion passes seven zero. All right, at the next meeting, we will have a final ordinance for everybody to review. And there will be a, there is a public comment period during the ordinance section, um, but hopefully we won't be past that.
Thank you.
So, thanks, everybody, for all your work. It is nine thirty-two. We still have a lot to go. Do we have a motion to extend the meeting?
Madam Mayor, I move that the meeting be extended to ten P M.
Thank you. Do we have another motion? Do I have a second?
Sorry, to ten P M.
Sorry, to ten P M.
That's the regular, that's the regular end time. So, the motion is to extend the meeting to ten thirty. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second from Councilmember Cargill. Any discussion? Not seeing any. All in favor, please say aye. Alright, looks like it's unanimous. Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Yes. Can I make a motion to make a, take a two-minute break?
We can stand at ease for two minutes. We're gonna take a quick nature break, yes. Okay, we are still, okay, we have, we're still missing two council members. Alright, but we do have a quorum. Can we, can we go ahead?
Well, you want to approve things, so. They're coming.
Technically, we could.
Yes, I guess technically.
Alright, apologize for the delay. We have two more waiting to join us. Alright, welcome back. Um, thanks for your patience. So we are up to the general business section of our agenda. Mayor Pro Tem, you are on.
Make a motion to approve, excuse me, general business consent agenda items ten A and B.
Second.
Alright, we have motion in the second. Any, any questions? Comments? Alright, not hearing any. All in favor of approving general business consent agenda A and B, please say aye. Any opposed? Alright, motion passes seven zero.
General Business Item eleven A, make a motion to approve the twenty-three, twenty-five collective bargaining agreement during the city and the Liberty Lake Police Guild.
Second.
We have a second from Councilmember Salberg. Any discussion or comments? Alright, first we've got Councilmember Cargill.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote to approve this, but I do think. Um, it's important to just point out one thing, Mark, with, with all due respect. Um, you had mentioned earlier about the, this being the first opportunity to tell the public where we are and where we came from. I would have preferred to see the meetings open to the public so that they could have attended them. And nothing prevents us in state law from doing that. Nothing also says we have to be them in, in person, just that both parties have to agree to do it. And so I would hope that in the future, we could have that discussion as well about opening it up so that the public can zoom in or tune in or be in. In the room. Most likely, nobody will, but still, I would, I would hope that we make that, that um, an option for them in the future. Um, I would also just say that I'm, I'm never gonna vote against um. Someone when they bring guns to the meeting, so. Approved.
Alright, any other questions? Um, Councilmember Salberg and then Councilmember Spencer.
A question, a comment. I want to thank the negotiating teams from both sides. Um, I was a member of our guild negotiating team and I can appreciate the situation that you guys were in. Um, it took me a while to understand it. It's been a while since I've seen. Um, what was put on the table and, and I, and I appreciate Mark especially going through. The timeline and Mark and Kyle both explained to me that this is something that we can do. My question is, should we do it? And my answer is yes, and I support it. So thank you all.
We got Councilmember Spencer and then Councilmember.
Yeah, I, I'm in support of this uh, law enforcement and public safety is the number one on everybody's list as far as I'm concerned. Um, one question I did have, and I think, and we had some different discussions back and forth, was in the end, how were we gonna pay for this? Um, I, I don't know that we pinned something down. I think we talked about a lot of scenarios, but I was just curious what, what was landed on.
So, uh, our strategy for, so this is a, this is a two-part problem. The first part is a fiscal twenty-three problem. The budget's already been appropriated and adopted. And so in order to cover the delta that was unplanned, that this creates is uh, a function of, of fund balance. We have more than adequate reserves and so we would propose for the, to solve the twenty-three problem that we're gonna use fund balance. The second question is, how do we cover the out years and make sure that we have uh, budgeted appropriately for twenty-four and twenty-five? And the answer is, when we, when we get to the development cycle for certainly fiscal twenty-four, which is coming up. We are going to make sure that we review every possible scenario um, to uh. Cost avoidance, um, gaining efficiency, revenue enhancement, all of those combined. So that when we bring you a budget, it's balanced and it, and it accounts for this. And then the same would be true for fiscal twenty-five.
And I, and I guess that gives us time, uh, was it November that they're, they're voting to, uh, at the county, county.
Yeah.
Additional, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, and Councilmember Dunn?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the members of the guild and congratulate the negotiating team, specifically gentlemen to create a new organization. Um, and to reach the success that we've had is a great achievement and reflects a mutual level of respect that I look forward to carrying in our future negotiation.
Anybody else? Councilmember Van Orman, go ahead.
Yep, I too will be voting in favor. Congratulations.
Alright, anybody else? Mayor Pro Tem?
Not so fast. I'm sorry, Article thirty, specialty positions. Uh, we've talked about this repeatedly and it doesn't look like the wording has changed regarding. Uh, the inter-local agreement with the school. It still says the city will then be responsible for providing the same contribution for the S R O position.
Yeah, so this is, uh, this is essential. We, we talked multiple times with the guild and we did between the first executive session. And the second executive session, made an adjustment to the wording to make it more clear. Which paragraph was talking about the salary and which paragraph was talking about the stipend. And so from the agreement's perspective, all we want to make sure of is that, uh, when the chief. Which he has the discretion to do, to say, we are having an S R O or we are not having an S R O. When that decision is made, that we have the ability to uh, pay that person. We're, so in other words, if there is an S R O and the chief says, we are not going to have an S R O, regardless of whether there's an agreement in place or not. Um, we would still be paying a salary. Um, and so the, so the expenditure from the, from the city side would have already been authorized through the budget. The thing that we would not be receiving is the revenue portion that would be coming from the school district. And so we also would not be paying the stipend because there would be no S R O.
I understand all that, but it still says the city will then be responsible for providing the same contribution for that position.
We would be paying the salary. We would be paying the full salary.
Correct, just the salary. It'd still be an officer.
It'd still be an officer, uh, an authorized F T U.
May, o- okay, I understand that, but maybe the, maybe how I'm reading this is. That it's gonna be the, providing the same contribution for the S R O position. How I read that, until, maybe I'm wrong, is we're still gonna support that. School resource officer, the S R O at the school, even if the school pulls out of the local agreement.
Now, the chief has the discretion to make that assignment, whether or not there's a contract in place. And so there are two options, the, the. The way the I L A is written, there's a termination clause that gives either party the option to terminate with a thirty-day notice. So, so we, we can terminate, the district can terminate, in either case.
Right.
If it's terminated through either party, we would still be paying that officer who is formally a, an S R O, a full salary.
Um, the. Change the cost, the cost for us, but we just don't get the.
We just don't get the revenue.
For the half salary.
That's correct. And, and we would no longer be paying the stipend.
Right.
Alright.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Right, not hearing any. Um, all in favor of approving the uh. What do we call it here? The collective bargaining agreement between the city and the Liberty Lake Police Guild, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, any opposed? Not seeing. Motion passes seven zero. Feel free to hang out till ten thirty, y'all. Alright. Thank you guys for being here. Thanks for coming, guys. Alright, eleven B.
Item eleven B, make a motion to approve the parametrics task order. Twenty twenty-three, zero, five, B, in the amount not to exceed thirty-seven thousand to design and bid the repair of Mission Avenue from just east of Kramer Parkway Roundabout. To just west of Corner stolen Way, an authorization made to execute the contract.
We have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Salberg. Any questions or discussion?
Yes.
Okay, we've got Councilmember Dunn first.
Um, this has been a, um, a difficult road for both parties. Can your count if at any point the developer had offered to pay for a third party to produce this plant?
So, uh. Offer, I'm not sure. Um, that subject was brought up during our April twentieth uh, design workshop. And I'll provide the, the same answer that I did then. The, the developer is free at any time to engage any. Third-party resource that, that they would like to in, to work toward their design. The, the city doesn't participate in that discussion. And so that's always been part of the equation. It's, it's part of the equation for any design team that comes in and submits plans to the city. They can hire any third party they would like. To prepare plans and to marshal them through the process.
In reflecting on our action to go to that, I just reflect, um. Two parties are unable to come to an agreement. If one offered, hey, I'd like to have somebody else deliver what it is that you were expecting, that was responded with. May or may not. And I just say, it seemed like if that was an alternative that could have got us there faster, it should have been advocated.
Well, and, and they're free right now to go and do that. We, there's, we have no, uh. They, it would be like them hiring uh, the design engineer to begin with. They can hire a different design engineer. And if they wish to do that, um, they can do that today.
Thanks.
We, we wouldn't be paying for that either way. So that wouldn't be something that the city would be party to.
I understand.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Councilmember Kurtz?
And I guess that's part of my hangup is, I. Did they offer to pay for something? And it, has that discussion been had? Because what I'm having a little trouble with is. The city incurring expense and I understand that there's reimbursements, but um. They, they had something that they needed to do and they didn't perform. And are we holding them accountable in any sort of way or are we just taking care of it for them?
So I wouldn't say that we're taking care of it for them. We are uh, stepping, we, we established a deadline.
Yeah.
And we are stepping in after the deadline was not met. And now we are going to ensure that the work is done according to our standard. And we are then going to submit for the reimbursement to get reimbursed for that work.
And I like that. And I understood that part, but, but the developer was still the one that was responsible to do the work. And it doesn't feel like from the presentation that I saw, that there was good partnership in that. And at the end of the day, the city's now doing the work, having, you guys have spent a lot of time working on this and that's not free either. Um, so I guess I don't know what I'm trying to say other than it's a little bothersome to be, for the city to have to outweigh the money. And go through the process and redo all the requests and everything when the developer should have been taking care of this, it sounds like, from the presentation I saw today.
We, we would agree. This, this is not the ideal solution. We uh, were uh, collaborating in order to avoid this.
Yep, you know, at, at some point you had to, you just have to say stop and go on, you know, go on with, in another direction. In order to get the project done in the timeframe that needs to be done. We had a deadline and we even extended it.
Right.
Um, I think we had Councilmember Spencer next and then Councilmember Cargill.
Um, yeah, just uh, considering the presentation that was made earlier. Uh, with all the meetings that were, were held, um, and the hundreds of emails, uh, many opportunities given to the. The developer to, to correct this issue. I think the, uh, what, what the mayor just said, the fact that we have a timeline, a deadline. That we need to get this done in, um, and, and they, it, it, correct me if I'm wrong, they still haven't presented a, an acceptable plan.
For the.
For the east side.
East of Kramer, that's correct.
So, at this point, we don't have a road and our priority is to make sure that road is open for when Kramer is open and. While the kids are out of school. So, I, I would be in favor of moving forward with this.
Thank you. Councilmember Cargill, I think you're next.
Mark, can you lay out, um, what will happen if we vote this down?
So there are a couple of things. Um, we would go back to the drawing board. Uh, we. Regardless of whether you approve it or vote to approve it or not approve it, right now, until it is repaired, we have a substandard road.
Right.
So, uh, if you, if you vote not to approve, um, that. Condition will likely extend longer than it ordinarily would have. Uh, certainly longer than we anticipated. We were expecting for this to be delivered up to spec last September.
Right.
Um, and so that would be the consequence.
So, I just want to walk through this. So let's say we were to vote it down. Would the process then continue with the company where we're trying to get them to come up with a plan to fix it? Because it seemed to me, it seems to me that the issue, and correct me if I'm wrong, the issue is not that we have to, we have, it's gonna fall off a cliff tomorrow. It's, it's the long-term issue, right?
Correct.
So, the roadway is good enough as it stands today, but who knows where it's gonna be a year from now. So I guess my question is, is if we reject this, then we, do we keep doing the song and dance with the company? Or are we, do we take legal action against the company even more so, or?
I, I'm gonna ask Sean to step in on the legal question. Yeah, I, I, I think what, I think the proposal was to move forward in this direction. If it wasn't, then we'd evaluate further what our next steps were. Um, with the idea, with a sense of urgency that was in place to try to get the road done in light of. The school opening and the fall and do it during the construction season, the summer before the school opened, it was, let's move in this direction. If that didn't work, um, in the sense of the council approving it, then we would go back and try to evaluate what our next steps would be.
Before I go back for seconds, Councilmember Van Orman and then Mayor Pro Tem.
Unfortunately, mission isn't the first rodeo. I mean, it was county and it was substandard then. And a grind and overlay is just not gonna do it. Um, I think you're taking the right, the right pathway. And getting good designs and going forward.
Mayor Pro Tem, I think you're next.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, the section that is in question, compared to the. The section between the two roundabouts that the developer said he'll take care of, sounded like happily. What are we talking about? A third, a quarter in length? Isn't it from the Kramer Roundabout back to the storage buildings?
Yes. You're asking about the segment east of Kramer.
So a space we're talking about versus what they're willing to fix versus what they're not willing to fix. And let me finish with my questions and maybe you can answer them all at one time here. So, I heard Mr. Frank say that he disagrees with obviously our, our engineer standing right here. On the, the requirement, that, that the road met the requirement. No, I'm not here to question that. I just. I think it's fair to have a response to his uh, opinion, Mr. Frank's. Uh, and help me understand how their approach towards that section has brought us to this.
Sure, and, and I think as we're pulling up uh, the presentation, if you'll refer.
And the reason I ask is, I guess for me. Um, I want to know that we've made every attempt to allow them to make it right. I think we have, but I just want to hear that. So, get to page.
So, hold on, hold on. So, if, if you refer back to the appendix that you received. Um, I can't remember which page it's on, but.
But.
There, there, it's toward the end. And there is a sheet that shows the segment with ninety percent of the slope measurements being uh, substandard.
I saw that.
Right. And so that's the issue. There are some, there are a couple of depth issues. Um, and so the proposal that was made, as, as Lisa described. Um, if you take a segment, let's just call it a hundred feet, the proposed solution dealt with ten of those feet. Um, it was proposing to say, I'm gonna, I'm gonna remove ten of those feet, replace them with a new ten feet. That shaped a little different and it's gonna resolve the rest of the issue and it, and it won't. Our opinion is that it won't. And so if you'd like to clarify.
Yeah.
Why it won't, let's, let's start there.
Okay, Todd, if you can go to page, let me see, one, two, three, four. Go to page sixteen for me, Todd.
So, I would prefer not to.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay, so one more question. The, the question you're asking is.
So, we've established that the proposed, we're talking phase two A, is not a viable solution.
Yeah.
We, we've gone through the steps to evaluate that. Why is it not a viable?
Okay, the first, the first reason is that they have only addressed the, maybe out of, let's say out of a hundred feet, they're addressing only ten feet. That's like a good fraction of, to show you, um, kind of comparable idea. The idea too also is that the workmanship of the area for uh, grind and overlay, it actually.
it actually does entail that you do detailed work. The curb ramps on both sides are set. That means that you have to grind out an area that they actually designed and that they designed correctly, that for the original plan that we approved. But they added a non-standard feature to it without our knowing about it. So they put a super elevation in there that wasn't supposed to be there. So that means that if you're gonna grind an overlay that, you have to have the workmanship and the ability to do that type of work. And we've already seen right now that they, it's just not possible. So in short, in short, our issue is that it was built not per plan, not per standard. They gave us a solution that was a miniscule amount of what they should have actually done. And then the workmanship on top of that. Of that, is that, is that the question?
Does, sorry, that was, sorry, that was, I'm sorry, I was thinking Wisconsin.
Yeah.
So we, we've given them many opportunities to make it right.
Yes, we have. We've given, over the course from all the way August, all the way up until April fifteenth, this is a mass amount of time. And on top of it, they didn't communicate with us about the project between November and December as well. And then when I pointed out that they had never addressed the side of the roundabout, the pushback was always, it's fine. So that was, it was.
So Mr. Frank's opinion is he disagrees with you. So help me through that part of the, I mean, he's not here, so I wanna, I wanna voice his opinion in the conversation. I'd like to hear your rebuttal to that.
Yeah, okay, so your question is one more time?
Well, he just, he just, he, and I heard that he thinks it's just, it's standard or it's acceptable.
Okay.
And he suggested that if somebody evaluates it, a third party, I'm assuming, and if that third party found it acceptable or not acceptable, that I heard, I thought I heard he say, him say, he would address it. So have you had that discussion with him?
Now, he, we had never heard that before, ever. But let me just get to the, to the point.
No.
The west side and the east side of the roundabout, they failed in five different locations for the depth of section. That means that when you fail on one of those, your whole roadway fails. They failed on five. And then on top of it, it wasn't just the depth of section, it also was the slopes too. So on that initial map for the appendix that you all received, that first initial title page, it shows you all the areas where it actually doesn't meet even slope standards.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah, so it wasn't just the, just, just the depth as well. So when he's making the statement that if a third party evaluates it, it will pass, our third party already evaluated it and it didn't pass. That's what the actual testing for the section was. It showed that it did not pass at all. And then we've also worked to our own on-call engineer that's been here, you know, working with Liberty Lake for a long time. Dave evaluated as well, said the same exact thing.
Thank you.
You're welcome, yeah.
Thanks, I think we go back to customer Spencer.
Yeah, and I, I guess the, I, I think the important thing to note is the fact that we can move forward. If we didn't have the, I guess one question I have and then a statement, and I'm not sure who to ask this to. What's the likelihood of Tiff lift reimbursing this if we move forward?
Lisa, you wanna handle that?
So it's one hundred percent, if we put together the paperwork, we will be reimbursed for it. And we, you, city council are in control because you actually are the ones that have to accept the infrastructure. By moving forward with this approach, what it means is that we are not accepting the infrastructure put in by Greenstone. Again, we'll still have, we'll, we'll look at an accounting for the portion of it that we reuse. But the portion of it that we do not reuse, that we have to repair, will be, will absolutely be covered by Tiffin left.
So, so to follow up to that, to me, any reasonable individual, I think, would look at the evidence that's been placed before us as far as the good faith effort that the city has made to rectify this with the, with the developer. The fact that we do have the ability to, to get the Tiff lift reimbursement. If we didn't, then I think the conversation would be very different. We'd have to continue to push. But we do have a deadline, this needs to be done this summer, and, and again, I would support this, this.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtz.
He said one other question regarding Tiff and lift, and that's whether by getting any sort of reimbursement for this, that limits us in any other way for any other projects that we have coming forward.
So I would actually like to defer to Kyle on that. We, I, I know that we have, we do have the funds in there and we do look at these projects. If we do not seek Tiff lift reimbursement and we allow them to go forward and repair it, they still would. It was already on the list, it was already budgeted.
Right, Kyle.
That's correct. And so we have a schedule that builds out until, let's say, twenty thirty-four, proposed projects. And we have a, we have a dollar amount aligned to that, and we have, okay, so we're funded at two million a year. We have this rolling amount. And so that doesn't necessarily change what we have in front of you in terms of how much this one project is gonna cost. We're gonna, we're gonna bring to you a resolution probably in July that outlines the next three years of projects. So this won't be, this will be kind of in the final phase, we'll note it. But that, that isn't going to affect things downstream because we, a million different things happened between now and then. We have identified projects that were identified back in two thousand and seven that we're just kind of churning through that, that we're, we're following kind of this designated path forward.
Really, the bottom line is, it's either going to be reimbursed to the developer had they done it, or it would be reimbursed to us. Go ahead.
Question, is that just the, the actual replacement of the road? Or does that cover the fees that we're talking about tonight for, for all in?
That's everything.
So we will, so again, when we seek Tiff lift reimbursement, we will be seeking Tiff lift reimbursement for our expense. So that is the, the design bidding bill, build. And then Greenstone, whatever, whatever of the infrastructure that we can reuse, they would potentially be able to go after just the unit cost associated with those.
Or what they've already done. Yeah.
The acceptable part.
Yeah, yeah. Do we have any idea of a cost?
The estimated cost is three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars because of the quantities given to us from parametrics.
All in, sales tax and all?
Yes, there'd be no sales tax on this, but. Well, not on the road. Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
Is there any, is there any backlash for the developer?
They do not believe that phase two needs to take place, as they said tonight. But one thing that I would mention is they did submit two different plan sets for phase two. And phase two B did show the entire limits being removed and replaced. They just weren't complete plans. So I think the developer understands that just what needs to be done, they just haven't taken the full step forward to do it, or whatever their motive is.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Comments or questions? Not hearing any, all in favor of approving, where am I? Action item B to approve the parametrics task order twenty twenty-three dash zero five B, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, vote comes, okay, like we have four to three. Council, you got, we've got Councilmember Dunn, Cargill and Kurtz opposed. All right, motion passes, all right.
Okay, make a motion to authorize firearm and equipment purchase, purchase from Gunnerama Wholesale, as listed on the quote dated March twentieth, twenty-three, month, twenty-eight thousand, two forty-eight and ten cents.
We have second.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Salberg, any questions? Chiefs here, if you have any questions, sound like it, all right.
I have a question, I'm trying to get there, sorry.
While you do that, I mean, is Gunnerama, are you sure this, I mean, is this like?
It's been around for a long.
What, what a name.
Chief, I just have one, if I can.
Yes, go ahead.
I just have one question. I noticed that you're purchasing thirty new ones, but you're only trading in twenty-two used ones, so what are you doing with the other eight?
The eight additional?
Yeah.
We're gonna be hiring. It's hiring, and also if we get into a critical incident, we need firearms. So say we have two or three officers involved in a critical incident, an officer involved shootings, those firearms are confiscated until the end of that investigation. So we're planning, it's a contingency plan for us, and also to account for any additional officers that, officers that we hire within the next.
I figured that was the answer. So then my follow-up question is, is that, in reading through the documents, it's a ten-year life expectancy. So these weapons that are not engaged on a regular basis with however many rounds of practice per year and whatever, whatever. How did it, are you planning to put these into some rotational or keep track of what's, that they're collecting dust, but they're not being used? How's that gonna work?
Yeah, well, of course, like I said, hiring, those that come in, I'm not a firearms instructor, so I'll defer to our lead of firearm instructor right here, Lieutenant Morgan. But we do rotate weapons periodically, and I'll let him explain.
The long and short of your answer is we can just, we do rotate weapons. So if we have some that are sitting in the armory for more than a year or so, then we try to rotate those out with weapons that have been fired a little bit more frequently. And that's what our rotation plan allows for us to do.
I figured, I just wanted to ask.
Yeah, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I'm not hearing any, all in favor of approving item C to authorize the fireman equipment purchase from Gunnerama Wholesale, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not seeing any, motion passes seven zero.
Make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to accept the donation, installation of the Never Forget Veterans Garden Monument at Orchard Park in the amount of nine hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Second, second from Councilmember Dunn, any questions? Right, not hearing any, all in favor of approving item D to approve and authorize the mayor to accept the donation from Never Forget Veterans Garden Monument, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any, motion passes seven zero.
Agenda item eleven, make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement for purchase and installation of a shade structure at Rocky Hill Park to cover the playground equipment in the amount of thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty-three cents.
Second. Second from Councilmember Dunn, any questions? Comments, Councilmember Dunn?
I'm just excited, this thing's been on a cap time for. Yes, it has, yes. Seriously, seven or eight years or something.
Yeah.
This is great.
Yeah.
Let's go.
All right, all in favor of approving the agreement for purchase and installation of the shade structure at Rocky Hill, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any, motion passes seven zero.
Agenda item eleven F, make a motion to authorize purchase of a pickup for the Streets Department not to exceed sixty-four thousand, five hundred dollars as one, as one becomes available. Second.
Second from Councilmember, Councilmember Tom, Councilmember Salberg, any questions, discussion on this one? Not hearing any, all in favor of authorizing the purchase of a pickup for the Streets Department not to exceed sixty-four thousand, five hundred dollars, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes seven zero.
General Business, item eleven G, authorize, make a motion to authorize the purchase of a dump truck for the Streets Department not to exceed two hundred and seventy-five thousand bones as one becomes available. Second.
A second from by Councilmember Salberg, any questions? Councilmember Cargill.
I just wanna clarify the, and I think, I think this is correct, the way I'm understanding it. The snowplow with wing, less than a hundred thousand miles, we're talking specifically about the snowplow. Correct, Jen?
Yes, and this is definitely, oh, what, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, not, not the truck itself, correct?
This is the freight, so if you see the big white truck with the DI's tank in the back, this is basically a repeat of that.
So it is the truck?
Yes.
Truck was on our budget, yeah, okay.
It's like you're, you're still thinking, any more?
No, I'm good.
You good?
Yeah.
All right, any other questions? All right, not hearing any, all in favor of authorizing the purchase of dump truck for the Streets Department not to exceed two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, not hearing any, motion passes seven and zero. All right, through action items, council comments, Councilmember Cargill, I did put on the future workshops, the base, baseball field discussion. Then we'll get to the future agenda items later, but were there any other council comments before we move on? Okay, public hearings and appeals. Now, I know Lisa and I, we had talked about this during the agenda meeting this morning. It is running late, Lisa did advise that this is not time sensitive and that we could move it to the next meeting if you guys would like to, both the public hearing and the second read of ordinance. Where'd it go, first read of two ninety-three? So it's, would anybody like to make that motion?
Time to move.
Okay, Councilmember Salberg and second by Councilmember Dunn to move the public hearings for the Development Code amendments as well as the first read ordinance to the meeting on May sixteenth. Any questions or discussion?
Was there a second?
Yeah. All right, and all in favor of moving those two items, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, motion passes seven zero.
Lisa.
All right, next, no resolutions, ordinances, you're doing the first one, ordinance number B. What? Yeah. Yep. Kelsey.
Sorry, to confirm, we're doing ordinance number two ninety-four.
Two ninety-four, yes.
Okay, thank you. Ordinance number two ninety-four, an ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, granting the right of franchise to Spectrum Fiber Network Two LLC for the operation of a telecommunications system in the City of Liberty Lake.
No action required, just first read.
Question.
Yeah.
Why in two thousand and ten did we put together a franchise agreement but never went to the council?
I'm sure we'll have to look into.
I have no idea. And what's even funnier about it is there was, we actually passed an ordinance right after we incorporated in two thousand and one to, to go through two thousand and three, the remainder of there, and it was never renewed in two thousand and three either. So I really, I, what the now owner said that it was, his parents apparently owned it, and he was just the guy who, who ran the fiber and whatnot. And, and that it was just something that when he took over the business, it slipped through the cracks. I just don't know why the city didn't catch that.
Was that community cable?
It was community cable.
Okay, yeah, we were passing like a hundred and sixty-six ordinances within that short amount of time. So, yeah, I can understand something getting lost in the woodwork. Well, and now we have our contract management software that we're still loading everything in, so we will have some automated reminders.
Thank you.
All right, we are on emergency ordinances, none, no items, introduction of upcoming agenda items. So we've got the, the draft in front of you, and we've got the follow-up for apartment market participation on May sixteenth. Kyle is hopefully going to be able to update us on the, to the insurance update, short family promise presentation. And add baseball fields to the TBD, I'm trying to see if there's anything else on here.
And the second read of the ordinance will be on.
Yeah, that's, yeah, this is work, this is really workshop, so Kelsey's got control of the rest of it.
I promise you'll get it.
All right, so if there's nothing else anybody wants to add, we are at citizen comments. So if there's anybody in the room who would like to make a comment, please hand your yellow sheet to Kelsey, who will give it to me. And if there's anybody left online who would like to make a comment, please send a note to Todd Henderson in the chat feature. And I know there was somebody earlier that I missed, so if that person is still hanging in, I will call on him, and that was Mike, Wendy, or Wendy. All right, Brad Hamlet.
Hey, thank you, Madam Mayor and the council. I'm reserved my comments, I'll keep it to the three minutes, sorry to keep you here late. But I wanted to listen to everything that was said tonight before I decided to speak. I wanna thank Councilmember Foyers amendment about not banning books. I think that's important. Do I think we even need to be here? No. Do I think we even should have been here? No. I am a little bit concerned about the document that you guys are working on. You had a clean document. Now your document is really full of all kinds of holes, in my opinion. And holes that can be shot at by legal means. And I really puts a lot of pressure on Sean, I know, to clean it up and make it work. But I don't understand the need for coming back and overseeing or reviewing, approving our policies. Our policies are pretty simple and run for running the library. The only policy that I can see that anyone, and I think it's been mentioned here before, would want to do, that is our collection policy, which would restrict access or allows access for people to have our information in our library. I'm gonna read to you real quickly. I'm gonna read to you real quickly um from the Bill of Rights, Article Five of the Bill of Rights. A person's right to use the library should not be denied or abridged because of origin, age, background, or views. The right to use the library. Includes access to and unrestricted use of all services, materials, and facilities. The library has to offer every restriction to access to. And use of libraries based solely on the chronological age, apparent maturity, educational level, literacy skills, a mass. A masturbatory or other legal status of users violates Article Five of this Bill of Rights. I believe that any attempt to um control. How that policy is written to restrict access. Creates a problem for the city and for um the council. So I'd like you to really reconsider your desire to uh govern the library's policies. And dictate how books are uh and information is accessed in our public library. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? Chad, Chad, um, Todd, anybody online?
George.
Thank you. All right, um, executive session, none. Any opposition to adjourning? Not hearing any. We are adjourned. Happy to click.